Good morning and welcome to City Hall. As a Packers fan, I'm glad we have a pastor in the room today. It's gonna be a rough morning or rough week. Pastor Ted Miller is with Crossroads Church. He'll lead us in the invocation. Afterwards, I'll ask Councilman Gary Mars to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Would everyone please stand?
Please join me just in prayer. Father, we thank you today for this is a great day that you have given us. The Psalmist says that this is the day that you have made, so we choose to rejoice. Your word also says that every good and perfect gift comes from you, so we acknowledge and start this day by thanking you for it. Father, I thank you for Mayor Cornet and this entire city council. I thank you, Lord, for this great city that we have a privilege to live in and to serve you from. We also acknowledge that, Lord, you said we could ask for wisdom and you would provide it, so we ask for that wisdom, that you would grant us the ability and the understanding to make good decisions, to do right, and to live honorably before you. We thank you, we seek your face, we put you first in all things, in the name of your son, we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. It is Disability Awareness Month, and we have many who have come here from our Mayor's Committee on Disability Concerns. If you all would come forward and then face the audience. We have a proclamation. I'll ask the clerk to read it as we get settled.
Whereas the month of October 2012 is designated in the United States as National Disability Employment Awareness Month. And whereas 2012 is the 22nd anniversary of the enactment of the Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA, the landmark legislation that set the standard as the most comprehensive civil rights law for people with disabilities. Whereas the city of Oklahoma City continues its ADA transition plan and MAPS projects, making facilities and transit disability accessible, and the city's ADA coordinator and staff work daily to assure that city programs and facilities are accessible to all. Whereas Oklahoma City needs the knowledge, skill, talent, and productivity of our citizens with disabilities to help energize our economy, and Oklahoma City's people with disabilities deserve the opportunity to work and have full lives. Whereas this year's theme for the Mayor's Committee on Disability Concerns is Street Smarts for People with Disabilities 2012. Whereas on October 30th, 2012, the Mayor's Committee on Disability Concerns is providing a special seminar on ADA accessibility in Oklahoma City and is holding its 22nd annual awards luncheon to honor outstanding people with disabilities and persons and entities that support their well-being. And area student artists have created posters raising awareness of progress for people with disabilities. Now therefore, Mick Cornet, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim the month of October 2012 as Disability Awareness Month and Tuesday, October 30th, as Special Disability Awareness Day in Oklahoma City, and he urges observance by all citizens as a reminder that people with disabilities can learn, work, pay taxes, buy goods and services, and be self-supporting if given the opportunity.
Let's show our appreciation to this committee and all of those involved. And Pam Henry is the chair of our committee. Pam?
I just want to say thank you to you, Mayor Cornet, and to all the city council for the support that you give to people with disabilities, and also to all the people of Oklahoma City who give their support daily to people with disabilities. When I'm out and about in my wheelchair, people just are so good to me. I haven't opened a door for myself in ages. Of course, I like the automatic doors the best, but we thank you, and everyone on this committee works very hard for you and the city and for all people with disabilities. And we're all volunteers and so happy to do it. Thank you for your help.
Thank you, Pam. Let's show our appreciation one more time. Thank you all. Thanks very much. Thank you so much. We also have a proclamation for Save a Leg, Save a Life. Let's learn more about that. Have the clerk read it. Won't you all come forward?
Whereas the Save a Leg, Save a Life Foundation is a nonprofit foundation started in October of 2005 and based in Oklahoma City, whose mission is to reduce the number of lower extremity amputations and to improve the quality of life for citizens who are afflicted with wounds and complications of diabetes and peripheral arterial disease. Whereas the foundation seeks to accomplish its mission by educating professionals, students, and patients through advanced, evidence-based methods as well as community outreach. Whereas in 2010, approximately 10% of Oklahomans suffered from diabetes and 10% of those with diabetes have peripheral arterial disease, which increases the odds of amputation. Statistics show that 50% of patients have a leg amputation will die within two years, and currently there are 1,600 amputations annually in Oklahoma. Whereas Oklahoma City has endeavored to increase the wellness and well-being of her citizens through healthy eating, exercise, and nutritional awareness. Whereas in September, which is National Pad Awareness Month, the foundation will hold an awareness day in each of the more than 60 cities in which the foundation chapter operates. Whereas the Oklahoma City community joins the foundation in promoting the awareness of risk factors, treatment methods, and advocacy efforts relating to lower extremity amputations in central Oklahoma. Now therefore, Mick Cornet, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim September 25th as Save a Leg, Save a Life Day in Oklahoma City, and he encourages all citizens to recognize the important contributions of this organization in our city.
Let's show our appreciation for all those who were involved in Save a Leg, Save a Life. Fantasia Sarita here. Would you like to say a few words?
We just started our chapter in January. Our group is a national nonprofit, started in Florida, and we started the Oklahoma chapter in January. We have up to 170 members now, and it's just caught like wildfire. There's a real need in our community, and our mission is to educate the public about the awareness of early intervention, early screening, diabetic control, smoking cessation, as well as educating the healthcare providers on how important it is to work as a team to save those legs. Spread the word, get those folks to the doctors, to the screenings, and we have a great national website for more information.
Thank you all both. Let's show our appreciation again. And our men in uniform are here because it's Fire Prevention Month. Chief, bring up your guys. And we have captains and majors walking up, and we have a proclamation. I'll ask the clerk to read it as we get settled.
Whereas the Oklahoma City Fire Department responded to more than 88,000 calls for emergency assistance in 2011, and whereas during the same year, fire killed eight of our citizens, injured 25 others, and caused over $36 million in property loss. Whereas the men and women of the Oklahoma City Fire Department are witness to the loss and devastation caused by the fire firsthand, not only for those citizens who have lost loved ones or their homes and belongings to fire, but for their own friends and coworkers injured or killed in the line of duty. Whereas the Oklahoma City Fire Department is actively engaged in year-round public education programs to raise awareness of fire safety, to help prevent the frequency and severity of fires in our city. Now therefore, Mick Cornet, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim the month of October 2012 as Fire Prevention Month in Oklahoma City, and he encourages all citizens to learn about fire prevention and fire safety and apply those practices at home, at work, and in the community.
Let's show our appreciation to our firefighters. Draw everyone's attention to Firefighter Prevention Month. And Chief, I know that there are people who may not have a battery in their smoke alarm, their smoke alarm doesn't work, and we have a program in place. Would you give us more details on that?
Sure. We have an ongoing program for smoke alarms, so that there's really, I mean, we've eliminated any excuse or any reason for somebody not to have a working smoke alarm in their home. So they contact the department, 297-3314, our Public Education Work Section, and we will get somebody out usually, and in a lot of cases, that day, to get them a smoke alarm or to change their batteries. So we do a lot of work in that way, and this month's, or this year's Fire Prevention Month focuses on two ways out. So just as important as having that working smoke alarm in your home, we're encouraging people to sit down with their families and talk about multiple ways to get out of their home, apartment, what have you, in the case of a fire. So when they do hear that smoke alarm, they know that if one way is not accessible to them, there's another way out. So that's what we're focusing on this year.
Wonderful. Well, pride to all of you. Thank you for what you do. Let's show again our appreciation.
Mayor, as you can imagine, I get on my soapbox every year. Somebody suggested I ought to just record it and play it back every year, but the thing about Fire Prevention Month that I always want to remind people of is it's extremely hard to, well, you can't actually tally up the number of fires that never happened. The best fire that you have is one that never happened, and you can't determine how many never happened because of these efforts. You can tally up the hours that this group puts in educating the public, educating children, educating senior citizens on how to prevent those fires from happening, but it's really hard to determine how many they've actually kept from happening. But it's one of the most important efforts that the Fire Department does, not only locally but nationwide, and I commend them for all that they do throughout the year. Good work.
Thank you, Chief.
Mayor, if I could, I also would like to say that Chief Bryant looked over at me when he was making those comments. I had a personal experience at 7:00 on Sunday morning, and a fire alarm went off in a commercial property that I own, and I arrived about 7:10, and there were two trucks there, they'd already been in the building, they'd already checked everything out, and it turned out it was a plugged-in coffee pot. So I do want to remind everybody to make sure that you unplug their coffee pots. Nothing happened this time, but I was so grateful to have our wonderful firefighters there.
Good reminder.
Appreciate it.
Thank you again.
Mayor? Yep. A number of neighborhoods have neighborhood associations, and you all are available to go out and put on programs, neighborhood associations on prevention, are you not, Chief?
Yes, sir. And we, at those meetings, on a regular basis, so a lot of our stations know who those associations are, and they interact on a regular basis, so they would like to...
And if somebody wanted a program, what number did they need to call?
Just call downtown to our administrative office.
Just call downtown to our administrative offices, 297-3314, and we can put them in the right direction.
Thanks, Chief.
They're also on Facebook now.
Oh, you're on Facebook? Why am I not surprised? And Twitter, so we can follow the Fire Department. I'm sure your thousands will. Thank you all. It is also YWCA Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Jan Perry is the CEO of the YWCA. She's coming forward. We have a proclamation. I'll ask the clerk to read it.
Whereas nearly 12,000 women, children, and men sought out help from Oklahoma-certified domestic violence programs over the course of one year. Whereas Oklahoma ranked 17th in the nation for the number of women murdered by men in single-victim, single-offender homicides. Whereas the Oklahoma City Police Department responds to an average of 120 domestic violence calls per week. Whereas domestic violence impacts child maltreatment, pregnancy, and substance abuse among teens, quality of life, and the economics of our local and statewide communities. Whereas community awareness will improve the community response to domestic violence. Whereas coordinated responses from key partners in the community are critical to holding perpetrators of domestic violence accountable in the criminal justice system. Whereas Verizon Wireless and the YWCA are partners in Oklahoma City for the HopeLine program, providing wireless phones for safety and for helping to increase awareness of domestic violence issues in Oklahoma. Now therefore, Mick Cornet, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim the month of October 2012 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Oklahoma City, and he encourages all Americans to help fight to raise awareness for this cause.
Let's show our appreciation to Jan and the wonderful folks over at the YWCA. And Jan, we do have specific issues in this community about domestic violence. We have a homicide rate that has several of those homicides attributed to domestic violence. As the proclamation stated, 120 police calls a week are generated on domestic violence issues. And Jan's on the front lines of trying to get awareness out there, so people will report problems earlier rather than later. And I think we have a lot of the resources available in our community, but we really need people to get tapped into. So whether it's someone inside your home that might be a victim or potential victim, or someone else you know that you can encourage to seek help, we would encourage you to do so. Anything else that I missed?
Well, I want to give you this.
All right.
Says YWCA Shelter Stops Crime Scenes. And one of the things that we know, it's been recognized that battered women's shelters are the closest thing we have to homicide prevention centers in the U.S. And it's the only shelter in Oklahoma City and serving Oklahoma City and surrounding areas. We know how critical it is that victims are able to get to safety and know that there are resources available. So the recognition from the city and being able to say to people across our community, this is a quality of life issue, it's an economic issue, it is so many of these issues that were named in there. We appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jan. Once again, let's show our appreciation to Jan for what she does.
Mayor, if I could add just one quick thing again. I'm sorry to keep interrupting this morning, but one of the things that's really critical in our community is that the shelter that Jan and her fabulous staff operate is 99.9% full 365 days a year. And a capital campaign is being launched today to help double the size, I think, of the shelter facilities and create some transitional housing for folks moving out of the shelter situation and into secure housing. And so there's a launch event tonight. It's the first public event in the Devon Tower on the 50th floor. And if anybody in the community would like to help or participate in the capital campaign, they can reach the YWCA office.
Help is certainly needed.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for pointing that out. All right, next up on our list is an opportunity to draw attention to our wonderful people at the Convention and Tourism Committee. So Mike, Rhonda, bring everybody up. We have a resolution. Our Convention and Visitors Bureau is 40 years old this week, and these two are in charge of current oversight, and we have a resolution. I'll ask the clerk to read.
Whereas on October 3rd, 1972, the Oklahoma City Council passed an ordinance that created the Oklahoma City Convention and Tourism Commission. Whereas two months later, the citizens of Oklahoma City voted to approve a 2% sales tax to be set aside and used exclusively for the purpose of encouraging, promoting, and fostering the convention and tourism development of the city of Oklahoma City. Whereas the mission of the Oklahoma City Convention and Visitors Commission and Bureau is to contribute to the economic well-being of Oklahoma City and its citizens through the solicitation and servicing of conventions and other related group business to promote the city as a first-class visitor destination and to enhance Oklahoma City's name and image. Whereas the staff of the Oklahoma City Convention and Visitors Bureau carry out the daily responsibilities for the commission, including the development of advertising and promotional programs and collateral materials to fulfill their mission. Whereas through the efforts of the Bureau, over 11 million convention and event delegates have been hosted by Oklahoma City since 1973. Whereas over the past five years, the Oklahoma City Convention and Visitors Bureau has received numerous awards, including Successful Meetings Magazine's Pinnacle Award, Meetings and Conventions Magazine's Gold Service Award, and has twice received the Red Bud Award as Oklahoma's Tourism Organization of the Year, presented by the Oklahoma Travel and Tourism Department. Whereas tourism is the third-largest industry in the state of Oklahoma, and visitors spend in excess of $2.1 billion in Oklahoma City annually, generating more than $56 million in local tax revenue. Whereas according to the data from the U.S. Travel Data Center, Oklahoma City is the most popular destination in the state of Oklahoma. Whereas the tourism industry is extremely important to the city of Oklahoma City, contributing to our employment, economic prosperity, and international trade, peace, understanding, and goodwill. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby extend their unanimous appreciation and support to the Oklahoma City Convention and Visitors Commission and Bureau as they celebrate 40 years of outstanding service to Oklahoma City.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. That's unanimous. Congratulations. Now we can applaud. And Rhonda Hooper and Mike Carrier are here. Mike, would you like to say anything? Every 40 years, we let you talk.
Thank you. We're very proud of Oklahoma City and very proud of what we are able to do and the assets that are here, both physical assets and the people assets. There are a lot of great places in the United States and internationally that tourists can travel to, convention delegates can go to, or events like the regatta this weekend can be held in, but it's the people that make the real difference. And that's what folks go back away from Oklahoma City, talking about as much as anything, is the way they're treated when they come to Oklahoma City. It's the memories that last. Again, we've got great facilities, and we're going to have many more over the coming years, but it's all about what we do with those and how we treat people when they come, and the citizens of Oklahoma City do a phenomenal job with that. So we're very proud of what we're able to do. Rhonda has served as our chairman of the commission for three years, I believe it was, and has been the vice chair of the Board of Directors of the Chamber for the Tourist Commission for seven years now. And so we've got some great longstanding service by volunteers in the community that do a great job for us. We appreciate the council's support and everything that the city does also.
Well, we're very proud of what you guys do to promote the city, and as you mentioned, the citizens of Oklahoma City are still our best salespeople. And just so everyone will know, when I meet visitors from out of town, I tell them that if they need anything during their stay, all they have to do is stop and ask one of our citizens. When they need a quarter, or they need directions, then our people will help them. And I've never been let down yet. Thank you, too. Let's show our appreciation one more time. Thanks, Mike. Well, on item 3B of the council agenda, this is an appointment to the Fish and Game Commission. How about a motion there? All right, cast your votes. That appointment passes unanimously. We also have the Journal of Council Proceedings on item four. It's to receive the Journal of Council Proceedings for September 6th, 11th, and 18th, and to approve the Journal of Council Proceedings for August 28th. Cast your votes. The journal is approved. Item five is a request for uncontested continuances.
Mayor, a few of these mornings, starting on page 20, under Dilapidated Structures, item 8I1, item G, 1225 Northeast 16th, we ask that that be stricken. The owner is removed. Item L, 2207, Southwest 23rd Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has removed. Item Q, 540, Southwest 47th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has repaired. And item R, 304 Southeast 50th Street, we ask that that be stricken. There's a new owner. And then on page 21, under Unsecured, item 8J1, item I, 504 Oakdale Drive, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item L, 3013, South Walker, we ask that that be stricken. We notify. Item M, 5533, South Walker, we ask that that be stricken. We notify. Item R, 1315, Northwest 13th Street, we ask that that be stricken. Owner has secured. Item T, 2505, Northeast 15th, we ask that that be stricken. We work for additional violations. Item AA, 2239, Southwest 28th Street, we ask that that be stricken. Owner secured. And item C, 2432, Southwest 50th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured.
Are there any other requests for uncontested continuances? All right. At this time, I would like to move up item 8D at the request of our county assessor, Leonard Sullivan. It's a zoning case, and it's in Ward 7. Skip, I'll ask representatives on this issue to come forward. The address is 7800 North I-35 Service Road. It was recommended for denial at Planning Commission. Dennis?
Mayor, members of the council, Dennis Fox. And Leonard Sullivan is here, and thank you very much for moving it up. He has two very close friends that are in very serious health, have very serious health conditions, and so he is going to try to minister to their needs. This is a case that although Planning Commission recommended denial, I think they did not take into consideration what I-35 at this area south of Wiltshire really consists of. We are not asking for any variance in regard to the spacing requirements that this council has set up for billboards, which is 1,200 feet between billboards. The nearest billboard to the south is 1,300 feet, and the nearest one to the north is 1,900 feet from where this location would be. We think this is an appropriate location. In fact, the landscape company back to the east contacted me prior to the Planning Commission. She couldn't appear at the Planning Commission, asked if we would talk to her between the Planning Commission and council. Mr. Sullivan has done that. If you have any questions to him, he can answer, but he's going to allow her to utilize some of the space in the billboard, which will be an economic benefit, because her property is set off from the interstate and it's her to find, and this will allow her some visual opportunities otherwise she wouldn't have. So we think it's a case that, as indicated, meets your separation requirements. We'd ask for your approval, and Mr. Sullivan is here if you have any questions.
All right. Skip, do you have any comments or questions on the item?
Well, I know that the report from staff was not supportive of this project, but I would like to point out to my other council members that, you know, this area that's I-35 on the service road, the sign itself is really totally consistent with all the other signage that's in the area. And it's an industrial, for the most part, industrial business area that has, in my opinion, not a major negative site appearance as it relates to the other type of signage that's in the area. And so I have visited with the applicant on several occasions. I have driven the area many times just to try to see, you know, what could be the major problem that staff felt like that, you know, just was not consistent with the rest of the quarter signage. And I couldn't find anything that stands out, you know, with this one particular sign over any of the other signage, and of course, not only signage, but some of the other buildings that's in the area. So to that extent, I, you know, I've spoken with other members of the council and expressed my understanding as it states in reference to the applicant's desire to go forth with that. So to that extent, I support it, and, you know, the applicant is here to give any other additional information as it relates to that.
All right, you want to make a motion then, Skip?
Mayor, could I?
I think Councilman, Mayor.
Can I make a question?
Can I make a question? Well, I just wondered if I could ask staff to come forward and talk. As I read the memo today, or as I read the memo that's before us today, it indicated that there had been a previous request, and there was an agreement entered into with the applicant, that there would be only one billboard on this property, and there already is one.
That's correct. There was an original I-2 zoning application that was denied by council and went to district court. There was an agreement with the city and the applicant to rezone the property, basically I-1, and allow one billboard. And this piece that they're in for now is the northern part of that, and they're trying to rezone it to add another billboard.
Okay.
When was that?
I don't recall. It was about 2000--
Probably 10 or 12 years ago.
The memo says, in January of 2000, our council entered into an agreement that there would be only one billboard.
Okay.
So, I'm just curious about what, and the facts have changed, that we should change that agreement.
And I had a question, similar question. Are we bound by that agreement? Do we have, is it part of a court decision that we have to do it? Pay attention to that agreement?
No, you're not bound by it. You can rezone this property to allow an additional billboard if you want to.
Any other comments or questions of Mr. Sullivan or anyone else in the case? All right. Skip, did you want to make a motion?
I'd like to know that this matter be passed.
All right. Is there a second? All right. We have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? Anyone here wishing to speak on this item? All right. Cast your votes. The matter passes seven to one.
Mayor, I'd really like to thank you for moving me up.
You're welcome. Sorry. Since Mike Carrier is here, and I know under city manager reports, we're going to have a presentation from him, why don't we allow Mike to go ahead and go now, since he was here for the 40th anniversary resolution? Mike, do you want to come forward and give your presentation and your annual report from CVB?
Go ahead.
This is under item 11 on the council agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I said a few minutes ago, we certainly appreciate what council and the city does on behalf of the tourism industry. 2012, our fiscal year 2012, was, again, a good year, but also somewhat of a challenging year. I want to hit the highlights. I know you have our report in front of you, and so, short PowerPoint that has some of the information in it. There we go. While Oklahoma City has pretty well recovered, in many ways, at least our tourism industry has, from the recession that we all suffered a couple of years ago, our industry as a whole still has some challenges, and many of the folks that we have, that we deal with from other parts of the country still face some challenging situations. And so, really, this past fiscal year was about maintaining our momentum in challenging times. We had a goal in producing sales leads, which our sales leads really is the pipeline to future success in our convention and sports side of the business. We had a goal of 324,000. We actually exceeded that goal, 417,000. So, we had success there. The other side of that is that the direct spending impact that we had set out as a goal of about $231 million in economic impact or direct spending, we didn't quite meet that. We met a, we achieved about $191 million in the convention and sports market. Part of that is because of some of the challenges that we've talked about before. We continue to face with some of our facilities here in Oklahoma City, lack of hotel rooms in some of the places we need them, things that we are in the process of working to correct, as well as some turnover in our own organization. And as you all know, when you have turnover in an organization, it has a tendency to hold you back a little bit and cause some fits and starts. But overall, we had a very good year, and some of the highlights included in our convention and sports sales as 203,900 future room nights that were confirmed. That's, that's good business. Those are people that are coming to Oklahoma City, bringing new dollars to Oklahoma City. 162 of our sales leads were generated in the last six months. So, we did a pretty decent job of catching up after we had been able to refill the positions that were vacant. We're adding services constantly. This year, we added a Housing Bureau service. What that is, is a part of our website, that if you're attending a convention, instead of having to call three or four hotels that are on the room block for your convention to find out where you can stay, you go on the web, you put in your particular needs, you list the hotels by preference of where you'd like to stay, and your reservation is automatically made in the highest priority available hotel, based on what you've asked for. So, you don't have to make a lot of phone calls. This is done directly with the hotels, and it's a service that is offered in cities around the country, something we've been able to add. We've also been very successful in getting meeting planners and event planners to come in, take a look at Oklahoma City. We've known for years, and all of us in this room see it daily, that when you get people to come here, they quickly realize that Oklahoma City in 2012 is not the Oklahoma City that they might remember or might have heard of from years ago, and that the constant change we are having, even with all the orange cones around the downtown area, is a very positive thing and something that people are wowed by. So, we have been able to secure a number of folks to come here and take a strong look. In our tourism sales side, our motor coaches and leisure tourism, on the motor coach side, we had expected 550 motor coach tours to be hosted this past year. We actually did it in excess of 800. Now, a big part of that was the passages exhibit that was held at the Museum of Art. And those are the kinds of things that we constantly look for and look to work with the folks who are producing those events. Sometimes they're long planning opportunities, sometimes they're short-term, as this one was. But we all benefit from that, because every time we're able to get people to come in for those, again, it's more new money coming into Oklahoma City. Our tourism sales for the motor coach side at least had a direct spending impact of about $5.2 million. And that's great incremental income, because that fills in a lot of blank spaces that some of our hotels and motels around the area have, at various times when we, when we may have other large shows in. But those extra 20 or 30 rooms that we're able to book every time a motor coach comes through town is very vital to their continued and long-term success. You can see here, the 820 motor coach groups, almost 34,000 visitors traveling by motor coach, 5.2 million in new revenue. We attended 24 motor coach and general tourism shows. Oklahoma City continues to be a very strong drive market. The 300 to 400 mile radius around Oklahoma City is a very fertile grounds for us in the tourism industry. The leisure travel, the people that come here on weekends, the people that come for a lot of the shows that we have here. And it's amazing to us, and continues to be, very, something that we're very pleased and proud to see, is how many people know as much as they do about Oklahoma City. We go to a consumer show in St. Louis, and it's not uncommon to have people come up to us and tell us as much as we can tell them, because they've been here several times, and they come back, and they enjoy their visits to Oklahoma City, and they want to know what's, what's new. What's the next activity that's going to be at the Museum of Art, or at National Cowboy and Western Heritage Museum? Can they get tickets to see the Thunder? Probably not, but come on, you know, we'll see what we can do. So, it's great to see the kind of response we get and what people are thinking about Oklahoma City as we continue to move forward. One of the other things we have continued to do is to develop package tours. It's easy to plan your own travel today, but it's very easy if there's a package where if you, if you're looking for, again, I use museum tours, because the museum's sitting right here, literally behind you all. If you're looking for museum tours, great. You know, we've got a package, excuse me, for that. If you're looking for sports, we've got packages for that, that can give you tickets for events or, in many cases, a list of events that are going on that are not ticketed, as well as help you book your hotel. So, it makes travel easier, makes it more fruitful for us as we move forward. Obviously, equine and livestock continue to be very important for us. Last year was another good year. When the recession hit, we had a lot of challenges with the equine market, because it is a very expensive market to be in for the show producers, as well as the trainers, the breeders. They had, there were challenges in the equine industry. As the horse show capital of the world, we've continued to be successful, and we are working with our partners there and continue to see success. We continue to see them growing their shows. One of the things that we've done this year is to realign some things, because in our, what we used to call the marquee events division, we had some shows in there that really and truly are conventions. The State FFA Convention, they didn't do anything at the fairgrounds. It was all at the convention center downtown. FCC LA, used to be the home ec folks. Now, it's family, career, family and career, I don't even, I don't even know what all the acronym is. But anyway, it's, it's high school students from across the state. So, we moved that into our convention side, so that this area is now purely our livestock and equine shows at the fairgrounds. It's coming back strong and getting stronger. We're seeing additional classes being added in some of our horse shows this fall, and plans for even more next year. We're seeing good, solid entrance in the, in the shows, and look for this to continue to be a strong market that benefits Oklahoma City for years to come. Two of our major partners, American Quarter Horse Association and the National Raining Horse Association, both are anticipating stronger numbers this year. We have seen growth in the American Quarter Horse Youth Show that was here in August. They feel like the world show this fall is going to be good, as are some of the other shows that are coming in. And it should be noted that we're one of only two cities that participates as a sponsor nationally with AQHA. The other one's down the road, down 35 and to the right. And we're the only national corporate sponsor city for the National Raining Horse Association. We do that to show these folks that we really do pay attention to them, we really do care about them, we really do want them to continue to be in Oklahoma City and be a success here with the facilities we have. And I might add, and I know Tim comes in and updates you all on the progress, but if you have not seen the new barn for at the fairgrounds, by all means, go take a look. And I can tell you that the upcoming show producers for the fall series that have seen that have big smiles on their faces, seeing the completion of the work in the barns at the fairgrounds. And that's going to be very, very well received, beginning next week, when the Morgan Show starts to load in. Overall, there's some things that we've done this year that we're very pleased with. One of the things, I spoke about it a few minutes ago during the resolution, it's the people that make the really big difference in Oklahoma City. And one of the things we've done is to launch the Oklahoma City part of a national certification program, Certified Tourism Ambassadors. This is a way to help our frontline employees. We've got over 30,000 people in the tourism industry in Oklahoma City. It's to help those frontline employees be able to better serve the traveling public that comes here. It's to be able to help them understand better what those folks really are asking for. A lot of, a lot of these people are trained very well in how to do their specific job, checking people into a hotel, or greeting them in a restaurant, or serving as a docent, or a ticket seller at one of our attractions. But when they are asked questions about the rest of the area, they may not be as astute in terms of knowing what all else there is to do in the area. That's what this program is about, is to help them learn, to ask the right questions, to pull from that customer, what is it you're really looking for, and then be able to help them, to help them find the other things that they might want to do. Or, as one example was given, if someone walks up to a front desk employee and says, you know, "Where can I go get something to eat?" Well, do you want to eat, or do you want to dine? You know, what are you looking for? You know, what are your food preferences? You know, do you have 15 minutes or an hour and a half? You know, let's engage in a little bit of conversation, helping these folks learn how to do that, and know what the options are around the area where they are, to ask the questions that get the person to where they really want to be. It's a national program. We have launched it, and the results so far are outstanding. We have our next class next week, as a matter of fact, down in Norman. And this is a joint project between the Edmund, Norman, and Oklahoma City CVBs, because tourism is a regional program. It's not just Oklahoma City. Tourists don't care where our political boundaries are. They care about what they want to go see, and so, we want to help them do that throughout the area. Our new website has been tremendously successful. In the first six months of the existence of the new site, a 34% increase in unique visitors to the site. That's, that is excellent, and that number has continued to go up as we have made some additional changes in how we're promoting it. We're also looking at more promotional and sponsorship opportunities, ways to get more of our partners involved in what we do, to help sell Oklahoma City. Hotel bed tax, and you all see the reports, but hotel bed tax continues to climb, and our occupancy rate is the envy of the nation. Through the second quarter, and you've, you've heard this and seen it, we were number two to Oahu in percentage increase in our hotels. That's pretty good. I don't mind being number two to Hawaii, you know. I'd rather be number one, but if I've got to be number two, Hawaii's not a bad place to be number two in comparison to. So, it continues to climb and continues to do well, and there are a lot of factors that are continuing to move that up. Total room nights that we have been involved in selling, this year was 373,000. We've sort of plateaued, and a part of that has been some of the economic challenge. A part of it is the availability of dates in the convention center and some of our other facilities. It's hard to find dates in a lot of the facilities. We continue to talk to horse shows that would love to come to Oklahoma City, but we don't have, we don't have dates that they're looking for. We continue to have challenges, as I said, in the convention center with shows that we already have booked, and other people want to be there in some type of an overlapping situation, and we're just not able to do it. So, we will continue to fight this challenge and continue to do everything we can to work with groups, to get them to adjust their schedules. Even a day or two sometimes will make a difference. But we continue to go out and solicit new groups and get people that want to come to Oklahoma City and work to see what we can do to increase the number of hotel rooms that are used. Direct spending, all of these statistics are very simply a snapshot as of June 30th of each year. I told you a few minutes ago about how many rooms we have in the pipeline, and it's a matter of getting people to make decisions. At the end of this year, our direct spending, $377 million, was below where we had been. It was below our expectations and our goals, but it equates to a return on investment of $93 for every dollar that we spend, which we still think is a pretty good return on investment. It's not where we want to be, and it's, it's an area that we will continue to work on, but it certainly is a good return. It's new money coming to Oklahoma City, it's new opportunities, and those will only continue to grow as we move forward. We, again, appreciate your all's support, your help. I know on several occasions this year, when we have invited the mayor to come speak to a group, and he's not been available, several of you all have come. We appreciate you doing that, and I can't tell you how much of an impact that makes on groups when someone from city government comes and welcomes them and lets them know that people here are paying attention to the fact that they're in the city. It's an exciting time to be in Oklahoma City. We've got a lot of great things going on, and just over the coming months, some of the things that you're going to see are going to be great opportunities for us to continue to improve the quality of life in Oklahoma City for our visitors and our residents. We thank you for your support, and if anyone has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Yeah. Ed?
Mike, can you just help me with some regional and national perspective in terms of budgets? In terms of both your CVB budgets compared to other regional and national cities, and also where our hotel motel tax rate is compared to other regional cities and national cities?
In terms of budget, our budget, our promotional budget is about $4.5 million. People we compete with, like Denver, Colorado, theirs is about $16 million. Dallas's is about $16, $18 million. Fort Worth is about $9 million. Kansas City is about $12 million. You know, so, the people that we compete with, and when you, when you look at this region of the country, we're kind of a hole in the doughnut. of the country, we're kind of a hole in the doughnut. You know, our competition is all around us, again, St. Louis, Kansas City, Omaha, Wichita, Memphis, Little Rock, Dallas, Fort Worth, Austin, San Antonio, Houston, Albuquerque, New Mexico, Denver, Colorado. We're right in the middle of that. You know, and so our budget is, is quite a bit lower than the majority of our competitors. In terms of hotel motel tax, when you look at the total checkout tax, and that's, that's the way we would really look at it, when you check out of a hotel room in Oklahoma City, you pay 13.875% in tax. In terms of our competition, many of those folks are a little bit above us. I think the highest out of that group is 15 or 15 and a quarter percent. Now again, that is a combination of a variety of taxes, and every, every state divides things up differently. Some of, some of those cities, it is purely hotel tax. Our hotel tax is five and a half of the 13, 875. Some of the cities have an extremely large city tax, a smaller hotel tax, no state sales tax, you know, there's just a variety of differences in there. So that's why we look at it as the total tax, because for the customer, that's what they're looking at, is what are we paying in a total tax? So 13, 875 is our total, and we're, we're probably about the average of all of those cities.
Okay. I want to just ask you about just the MAPS III process. I've, I've been hoping for quite a while that we would release the convention sports and leisure study that we did back in 2009. Not, and, and if we don't, maybe as an alternative, I would hope that maybe you could present an executive summary or just some of the, the things that are in there about what it takes to develop a new convention center. We've talked, and you talked about lack of adequate facility space, exhibit halls and stuff like that, but there's some things in that study that, there's things that we can't control, the weather, the number of direct flights to Oklahoma City, but there's also things that I had mentioned, like public transit, like trails and sidewalks, like activities in relation, like discussion about the hotel. And one, one thing I've heard repeated over and over and over in terms of the MAPS III process is just a concern that all of these projects are being developed in silos and that there's not a holistic approach, they're not interfacing with each other. And I'm wondering if, if you could talk to the groups, if they would understand, for example, that that, that company thought that it was very important for public transit and the convention center to develop a symbiotic relationship. But I don't really, and I have a concern that those two groups, the streetcar, and maybe there's competition, there's not, there's not the interface, and I'm wondering if there's some way that you could help facilitate dialogue between the two. I listened to the consultants for, that are going to develop the convention center. I didn't, didn't really hear a discussion about public transit. But the streetcar, for example, is going to struggle, I think, perhaps with ridership. But your hundreds and hundreds of people coming out of conventions might be a natural symbiotic relationship. So how does the streetcar, does it come right up to the convention center? Does it, you know, how, how does that relationship? And so I would hope that the consultants and that the subcommittees could all start working together and realize that they need each other.
I, I think you will, I think that is already happening to some degree, probably not as much as you're, you're looking for it to, but I think it will happen more and more as we continue to move through. I know two weeks ago, Hargraves and Associates were here to look at the park, I think it was two weeks ago, time kind of run together the last few weeks. But I was involved in a focus group where we talked with, with Hargraves and with some folks from the parks, subcommittee, and a variety of other people. And I know there were several other focus groups that, they talked about the location of the convention center and the interaction with the park. I know Kimberly Lowe has been to several of the MAPS subcommittee meetings for the convention center, has spoken at those about the interaction. So there has been interaction, I think there will continue to be more. I know we have been concerned with the, the convention center subcommittee about transit, and I know that's one of the reasons why we were working with David's office and appreciate council moving up the, the consulting selection for the convention center so that we can all work together, because we really need the professionals there to help. One of the things we've seen in some of our inner-city visits, and Mr. Couch has been on some of these as well as some members of council, in Denver, Colorado, there is a transit station inside the convention center. In Charlotte, North Carolina, the convention center was built back in, I think that convention center opened in about 95. The transit literally runs through the middle of the convention center. You know, and when they planned that, everybody thought they were nuts. You know, now, what do we need here? We don't know yet, but that's why the consultants are, are coming on board, is to help us. You know, and I think, I don't know where the transit committee is with consultants, but you know, we get all these consultants together along with our committees, there's a lot that can be done, and you know, we're, we're moving down that path. We're talking about a lot of those things, and so I think that it will, I think it will happen, and I think we will have, we will have continually better planning as we, as we continue to move down that, down that road.
Do you think as we move forward, we can get the Hargraves and Jacobs, get all the consultants for the different groups together and start interfacing?
Councilman, as I've told you several times, we do anticipate doing that. We're going to, we've got some of the best consultants in, in the country. And yes, we will have the consultants talk to each other and meet in a group, and, and yes, we will do that. We've got Hargraves on the park, we've got, we're, you know, proposing, you know, one of the top in the country on, on convention center, had a great group to pick from on the convention center. Jacobs is on board, we've got our consultant from the Boulevard, and we will get those folks together because it is a critical area of the intersection of those projects.
Excellent. I think even beyond the streetcar, a Northeast Rail Line, you know, could, could be part of that discussion, and that may help with the packages, getting up to the zoo, the Adventure District. One, one last question, Mike, is just, and another piece, not just, is, is the convention center hotel and the location of that hotel. We've talked about how important it is for it to be close to the convention center. If, if it goes on its current site, is there a trade-off if you put the convention, I've heard it discussed, that if you're going to make an investment in a hotel, you need to get something besides a hotel for that, that it can be a tool to spur development? Is there a trade-off between if you put it on that site, which is some of the most easily developable land, versus somewhere else? Do you lose that potential to help that, have the hotel help spur development?
That's not a yes/no question, and I mean, very, very frankly, councilman, until we go through the process with the architects for the convention center and, and really vet a whole lot of different options, it's, it's challenging to answer that question with a whole lot of thought.
Okay.
Because we have to be able to serve the convention center the absolute best we can. And there are, one of the great things about the site that has been selected is we have a lot of options, and a lot of those options will do a lot of things to help the city overall. We want, that's why we're in the process of hiring the consultants, is to help us vet all of those options, to look at what's available out there, and pick the best option that is going to do the most for us as we develop this whole project. So you know, that's, that's what the consultants are going to be assisting us with so that we can answer a lot of these questions.
Thank you. Gary, and then Larry.
Well, I, I just feel like I have to make one, one quick comment. The, the concept that the committees didn't know about the other committees' work, the past year that I spent as the council representative on all of the MAPS III subcommittees and on the advisory board, I can assure you that all those committees knew about what was going on with the others. I sit in a convention center subcommittee and heard about the park when the, when the preliminary concepts and all of this preliminary work was being done. I sit in transit and heard about the convention center. I mean, it's, they're hearing about it, and there are people on those committees that also sit on the large advisory committee. And if, you know, so that the concept that, that they're working in the dark and these, all these little committees, and they're not knowing what's going on with the others, I think is not an entirely clear picture. I believe that they, they, they've been informed about what the preliminary studies were and what the concepts were. Did they get actual details? No, because nobody had them at that particular time. But I think when you start hearing, when you started hearing talk about the transit wanted to relook at their line because now they know they need a line down by the convention center. They're, they're talking about going underneath the railroad tracks with a transit line down by the convention center in the arena. That all is talking, I mean, that, it's not that they didn't know about the convention center, and, and vice versa, and the park. And the, the park says, well, you know, what, we're going to have this convention center on our north end, and what's that going to do, and how's that going to affect it? And the, and the convention center people heard about the park and what's going to happen with it and so forth. So I, I just don't want the public out there watching this to think that there's been a lot of, of, of meetings that weren't coordinated or that people didn't know about what was going on with other things. And as soon as all of them start coming closer to being actually designed, I think you'll see more and more of that, okay, if we put that here, what does that do for transit? Or if we put, do this in the park, what does that do for the convention center? So I think that's happening, a lot more than people realize it is happening. It has happened over, since we started all of this.
Larry?
Thank you, Your Honor. Mike, I'm intrigued by your program, your ambassador program.
Yes, sir.
What interaction has there been, if any, between the hotel complex at the Meridian area and this ambassador program? Because there we've got a concentration of several thousands of rooms.
Right.
Has the ambassador program been presented to them, and are they involved with it, or will they be involved with it?
Yes, sir. When we first started contemplating bringing CTA here, the first people we went to was the Hotel Association. They are, they are, if not our strongest, certainly one of our strongest partners. And so we went straight to Jeff and, and the members of the Convention and Visitors Commission, and there are six hoteliers on that commission, to talk about this. They're very excited about it. A part of the program is a train the trainers program, and the first two trainers that were trained locally were Jeff Penner, head of the Hotel Association, and Chad Huntington with Water Taxi. So you know, we've, we've got some good partners there, and you know, we will, we'll continually be reaching out to these folks as we move forward. Yes, sir.
David?
Thank you, Your Honor. Mike, when I attend conferences throughout the country, they're usually held at hotels that are fairly large. And in your report, you said that part of the contributing factor to the lack of achieving the spending goals was due to facility space as well as hotel rooms. Now, the facility space isn't necessarily the convention center, because many times when I go to these conferences, all of our meetings are within the hotel, but they're so large, and I don't think we have one currently in Oklahoma City that would measure up to those sizes. What is the size, as far as the number of rooms, that you think would be appropriate for our city? I mean, is it 500 rooms, 700, 800?
We, we regularly receive requests for proposals from convention groups that, that have a stipulation in them requiring 500 rooms in their room block in their headquarters' hotel. To get that, you've got to have a hotel that's somewhere between 6 and 650 rooms. All of the major hotel companies have national contracts and even local contracts with corporate users of hotel rooms. So if it's a 500-room hotel, they're not going to give you all 500 rooms for a convention group. Even Opryland Hotel in Nashville won't do that. They won't give you 100% of the house. So our headquarters hotel is going to need to be 600 to 650 rooms to be able to accommodate many of those groups. It's, it's a challenge for us. Right now, when you, when you look at the meeting space available in our hotels, our downtown hotels outside of the Cox Center space, we just don't have that much meeting space in any of our downtown hotels. The Skirvin probably has the largest total amount of space, and you know, their large ballroom, I think, will accommodate at max about 400 people. So it puts us at a disadvantage. In room count, there are only six hotels in the entire metro area that have more than 300 rooms. We've got 235, give or take one or two, 235 hotels, six of them have more than 300 rooms. Those are the kinds of hotels that have the larger meeting space, and we just don't have that inventory here. So that's one of our big challenges, is, is when the convention center is booked, even if we have rooms available, a second meeting is very challenging because we don't have the meeting space to put those folks in.
It looks to me, although I'm not the one making the investment, that even before the new convention center is, is completed, there'd be support for a, a new large hotel, kind of a flagship-type hotel. Would you agree with that? I mean, again, even before the convention center, that would be a great addition and would help support the room usage in that type of hotel. But it looks like, just from these numbers, that there's enough demand for that type of hotel already. And especially when you compare us to those other cities that you've mentioned, Dallas, Fort Worth, Denver, Kansas City, they have multiple hotels that would fit that size or criteria.
There's a lot of interest in the hotel community about what's going on here because of the convention center. There have been a number of, of the major hotel companies that have stayed in touch with us to stay up to date on what's going on with the convention center. The mayor met with, with several of them at International Council Shopping Centers along with several others, I was a few, a few years ago, just to introduce, and those folks are keeping, keeping track of what's going on. The challenge with a hotel is the length of time that it takes to put a deal together and the length of time it takes to design and build. You look at other cities, right now in, in the Austin market, there's a couple of, of major hotels being built. It has taken four or five years to put the deal together, and, and those, you know, those deals are challenging. So you've got all of that length of time to put the deal together, and then three or four years to design and build the hotel. So you know, there's people out there looking, but the convention center headquarters hotel is probably going to be the catalyst to move this forward. And obviously, the MAPS program tells people that it's going, that the convention center is going to happen. That's a big advantage for us.
Skip? I'm going to give you a break. But I'm concerned about an update in reference to a hotel in the Adventure District in northeast Oklahoma City. Is it any information you can share with us in reference to that? I know there's been some rumors about the Tribe and, and so since you're here, get away from the downtown convention center, talk about northeast.
What I can tell you, sir, is that there are several folks that are interested in doing projects in the northeast, and we define the northeast as 235 east and Reno north.
So.
Yeah, we'll, we'll talk about that whole geographic area. There are several projects that are being looked at, and people are involved in doing their due diligence. Again, it, it, it takes time to put these things together, and there are people that are seriously looking at those, and there's a lot of interest in that area for a variety of reasons. So I can't say that something's going to happen, you know, tomorrow or next month or even this year, but there are people looking, and they are looking very seriously at that area as, as well as some other areas around the city.
Well, in Pacific, to the Adventure District.
There are some people looking at the Adventure District as well as other sites in that area.
Are any of those the Tribe?
I, you know, there are people looking in the, in the, in that area.
The Tribe, they, they are people, I understand.
You didn't, you didn't know you were perming.
Thank you. We're going to get this.
I have a son who is, I have a son who recently graduated from law school, and he's been advising me, sir.
All right, we better let Mike get back to work. Mike, thank you for all your work. Congratulations again on the 40th anniversary of CBB.
Thank you.
Let's process the council meeting convenes the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. We've kind of bounced around the agenda this morning, but we're back on the front page. It looks like we have about 11 items here on the MFA. It looks like we have about 11 items here on the MFA. Come answer questions. All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC MFA convenes the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority.
Can I ask one question, Mayor?
You can.
On the downtown Oklahoma City, I'm just trying to understand, we spend about $234,000 from the general fund. More than half of that is landscaping Chesapeake Arena, the convention center. Is it fair to say that's, if we didn't have this, that's money we would have spent through our Parks Department anyway?
Yes.
Okay, so we're just moving it from Parks to the bid?
That's correct.
Okay.
That was done in bid one, actually, or bid, the first.
Have we done that successfully with other bids? Or is that a policy that's worked for us?
I think, I think we've only done that in the downtown bid to date.
Okay.
I have a question about that same project. This is, it's small dollars, but I was just curious as to what we did. Item number three is $7,200 for Santa Fe Amtrak Railroad Security Service. I'm just curious what the city was doing to provide security at the Amtrak train station.
Well, when Amtrak came in, there was a security issue, and we stepped in, fulfilled that role. We've done it ever since Amtrak has come, returned to Oklahoma City.
The railroad didn't feel any obligation to do that?
They did not.
Maybe if we agreed to do this, they would fix it crossing at 10th Street.
That's probably on the same railroad.
All right, any other comments or questions on the PPA? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. I'll note that our golf professionals are here this morning for a couple of items on the PPA. We appreciate your work. Thanks for your attendance today. We'll adjourn the OC PPA convenes the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. There are two items. All right, comments or questions here on the EAT? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC EAT reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket.
Move the subject to individual considerations.
All right, we have a motion and a second. I know we have a presentation coming up from Craig Freeman, but why don't we go ahead and let counsel at least speak at this point about which items they'd like to talk about individually? Yeah, Larry?
I have a question on Y, Your Honor.
Y, okay.
I have a question on AC, Your Honor.
AC, okay.
Alpha Charlie.
And Mayor, I just wanted to mention AS and AV.
AS and AV, all right. Ed, did you want to do something?
Some of mine are the same question for multiple items, but in addition to Y and AC, it would be U, V, AD, AG, and AL.
All right, I think I got all that. All right, why don't we go ahead and have the presentation?
Actually, Doug Dollar is going to give us a presentation this morning on the budget amendment. That's item AL.
AL, page 10 on your council agenda.
And it's been slightly modified, so a new document has been passed out.
Right, the new document that was just passed out here after the budget amendment had been distributed, we found a small error in the police sales tax for about $2,500. And so, the new documents that you have there make that correction, and we would request that the resolution be amended to reflect the new totals in the documents that you have there. And I'll go through those totals here at the end. This is our second budget amendment for FY13. We've got basically three items on the amendment. The first is to update the sales tax estimate. When we had originally proposed the FY13 budget, we had included a 3% estimate in growth in sales tax. When our May and June, if sales tax came in, it came in better than expected. So, our final projection ended up being about 2.3%. We're recommending amendment, mending the sales tax amount to recalibrate it to the 3% growth over last year. This will result in an increase in the general fund of about $1.3 million. And with the additional budget authority, we'll be adding 18 new police department positions in the patrol division. These will be uniform positions. The other sales tax funds are also being amended to proportionally grow, same 3% rate. And those amounts range from $84,000 in the zoo sales tax fund all the way up to $672,000 in the MAPS III sales tax fund. The second item in the amendment is our annual purchase order rollover amendment. This is kind of an administrative process we go through each year. When goods and services were ordered in the previous year but aren't received before the end of the fiscal year, they have to be paid for in the new fiscal year. So, we're adding budget authority in each department equal to the amounts that they have for outstanding orders.
Which we do every year.
We do this every year, right. And the revenue from this change comes from the fund balance that would have been large, would have been smaller had those purchases been made. And the total amount there is just under $3 million, and this is down just a little bit from last year's amount. Final item in the amendment is to the special purpose fund. The special purpose fund is where we accept contributions and donations for specific purposes so that we can segregate those funds and ensure that they're used for their intended purpose. First change in the special purpose fund is to provide $600,000 in budget authority for a contribution received from developers who want Rockwell widened north of Memorial for about half a mile. And the second project, it's being partially funded by developers on Britton Road west of County Line. This is a rural arterial road that is in a deteriorated condition, and the developers contributing $15,000 to cover half the cost of materials to chip seal that section of road. So, overall, the amendment totals $6.2 million and brings the city budget up to $966,63,461 in total. So, today, the amendment is being introduced. The amendment will be advertised in the newspaper. Next week, there'll be a public hearing prior to voting on the amendment. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, questions for Doug?
Can you, when, of the 18 police positions, when do you think they actually get through, when do they actually begin service?
Actually, we talked about that, and I don't know the specifics, but I know Chief City knows those, and he'll be here. I'll get you in just a minute. So, if we just wait a second.
I believe you'd said that there's a recruit class going on. It'll be next spring before they're out on the street, before the first officers from this additional staffing would be out on the street.
Well, you, I mean, you have a recruit class, but we're adding 40 additional positions.
Right, and some are in the existing recruit class, and then the additional ones that we've approved today will be in the spring recruit class.
So, in the spring, we'll add 18 additional ones to the recruit class?
Well, yeah, we'll add 18 to that recruit class at that time. There'll be probably another recruit class because of retirement's up until that point, so we will supplement that by 18.
Any other comments or questions for Doug?
Do we have to approve the resolution this morning on the?
We need to approve the amendment to the resolution.
I move approval of the amendment to the resolution.
All right. We're voting on the amendment. Comments or questions? Cast your votes. The amendment passed unanimously. And then the rest of it falls under the consent docket. All right, Larry, you wanted to talk about item Y?
Yes, item Y is to extend the pavement on Southwest 15th from MacArthur to the west about 4,000 feet. This will serve one of the city's hidden gems, Crystal Lake, which is being operated now by City Care as a fishing place for inner-city kids, and also is open to the public for fishing. And is Eric here?
Yes.
Eric, if you could, it's an example of great cooperation between the county and the city. Do you have an estimated timeline of when this resurfacing might be accomplished?
I do. And it's a unique project. It's another one of the partnerships that the city has entered into. We're also going to use a new material on this roadway that is recycled asphalt shingle, which is something that this council received bids on just a couple of months ago. Bids on the project are expected to be received in October. And due to weather and some of the conditions for paving, we're actually planning to start construction in the February, March timeframe, the spring, and that's as scheduled by Oklahoma County. They're going to assist in a lot of that work, so we should have a new roadway just very soon thereafter.
Thank you very much, sir. And of course, council may be aware also, there's work being done on the Oklahoma River Trail, which will go from Southwest 15th and Meridian and connect with Overhouser. It will go right through Crystal Lake, and so that area will be opened up for recreation for a number of purposes. And this resurfacing with the cooperation of the county will be a tremendous asset to it. Thank you, Your Honor.
Pat, item AC.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a, I know Councilman Chudie has some questions on it as well, but it's a paving project from Northwest 36th to Britton Road. And the park from Wilshire to Britton Road certainly needs improvement. And it also needs, in addition to new paving, some drainage work. Would this contract also include drainage improvement? I heard that, yes, so that's good because the piece between Britton and Wilshire floods when we get the slightest amount of rain, causes problems traffic-wise. The second question, or third question maybe, is there going to be a center-left turn lane in the middle of the street?
I do not believe that's planned as a part of the project. So, simply, this is a two-lane to four-lane widening, and what you're looking at specifically today is to just add an additional two miles to an existing agreement that we already have. But I'm not aware of any additional widening for a turn lane, no.
Okay, because there is already in parts of that street a left turn lane in the center, and it's been very helpful. So, I was curious if we were going forward with that. Thank you.
All right, Meg, item AS and AV.
Yes, Mayor, thank you very much. I just wanted to mention, item AS is an agreement with the Linwood Place Neighborhood Association to take on some landscaping and improvements for the Boulevard there on 19th and Drexel and also in Waynans Park. And, you know, again, we see these almost every Tuesday at council, but it's just another example of how our neighborhood associations are willing and anxious to take on helping the city and our Parks Department improve their neighborhoods. And so, I'm very grateful to the Linwood Neighborhood Association. And then AV is a resolution that declares the armory on 44th, Southwest 44th Street in Young's Park surplus and available for sale. And I just wanted to make note that I had an opportunity to attend the ceremony where the National Guard actually turned that building over to the city of Oklahoma City. It was really an extremely nice and very moving ceremony. We learned the whole 50-year history of that armory and how, you know, honorably, our folks have served our country from that location, and it was really special. We were delivered a plaque commemorating that turnover. It's available perhaps to go back to Santa Fe schools if they want it for their office. But this is a really exciting program, and in conjunction with Santa Fe's desire to take on this property, there have been a lot of conversations between Santa Fe and the Boys and Girls Club, and we're hoping that we'll be able to forge a partnership here and create a real asset for that neighborhood. It's a really exciting opportunity.
Just to fill in the gap a little bit on that, in anticipation of this item, we did put out an RFP to see who would want to, or the highest and best use for that building. And we, Santa Fe is the group we're negotiating with, Santa Fe High School.
Very excited about it.
All right, Larry, Gary. As I recall, one or both of these had some environmental abatement issues. Have those been taken care of?
I believe that they have to turn them over to us in clean condition. So, I believe that they have been taken care of, but let me check on that, Gary, and get back to your counsel.
Skip?
Yes. Mayor, I was, let me say, manager, could you give me an update as it relates to the size of the reserve center in Lincoln Park that's on for, determined as abandoned and surplus?
Yeah, the one on 36th Street.
Yes.
Yeah.
What is the actual size of its, or is the dimensions?
Don't know, but I'll sure get that, I can find out and get it to you.
Is there anyone that has expressed any interest in the facility?
Yes, the county has expressed interest for a, their agricultural, they're, help me out, what's the term we're using?
VOTAC.
The VOTAC? No, 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 the county, our community.
Extension, you're referring to county extension.
Extension, yes.
And the areas have been mitigated, as was asked a few minutes ago. Okay.
All right.
Counselor Mars' question.
Ed, you had a series of items you wanted to discuss?
When you started the UNB, these are two projects from the.
From the 2000 bond, one is Wilshire Boulevard and one is Hefner Road. And they, they've both gone over budget at Wilshire by roughly 5% and Hefner by 9%. And as a result, we've directed funds from the 2007 bond, unlisted funds, towards those 2000 bond projects. And so, I guess I'm curious about how that, you know, for Hefner, we moved $1 million from unlisted funds from the 2007 bond to cover this 2000 bond project. So, how does that, I guess I wasn't, you can use unlisted funds from one bond to pay for cost overruns on another bond?
Unlisted funds can be used for anything under their intended purpose. So, in the case of street unlisted funds, they can be used on anything streets. We do find ourselves in a lot of cases that a previous project, whether it's bond-funded or possibly CIP, is over budget. Funding is required to complete the project or maybe add value to that. And in the case of this project, we've chosen to use 2007 unlisted funds, not dedicated to any listed project, but unlisted funds to complete it, yes.
What, it seems like, I know we spent $1 million on Grand, for example, we've talked about that, from the unlisted funds. How, what is our, what is the general amount allocated for unlisted funds in the 2007 bond?
There's about, there's 52 million that was in the bond authorization for streets in the 2007 bond issue, total.
So, how much is unlisted?
52 million.
52 million. How much have we gone through so far?
We're just a little over the halfway point at about 29.4. 29.4 million has been through the bond advisory, on-site committees for approval on unlisted projects.
Have we completed a little over half of the 2007 bond?
We're just under half on completion of the 2007 bond issue. We're just under halfway.
So, we're going through it a little bit faster than?
We are, and staff is cognizant of that, so we're obviously very cautious as we bring recommendations to you for approval of use of those funds.
One thing I struggle with, Eric, I wonder, I just wonder, when you do bonds like that every 10 years, is that, I just struggle with, is that too far between, when you're trying, when the city's changing and playing?
Counselman, that's a great question, and that's a policy decision that we wrestled with last time around. Counselman Ryan, in particularly, advocated a shorter timeframe, and there was some discussion as what was the appropriate timeframe for this bond issue. And so, that was greatly debated by this body the last time we did a bond issue.
Well, I'm going to, Eric, I just want to ask you one specific question on that. Do you, when you have projects that, I mean, it's 2012, this is a 2000 bond, when you're doing it 12 years later, 13 years later, do you think that contributes to errors in cost estimates? I mean, I know that you've got, you built in inflation, so you're accounting for that, but, I mean, the cost of materials, the cost of, I mean, things change 12, 13 years later. Does that, you think that's something we have to overcome in terms of cost estimates?
I think on any of our multi-year capital programs, whether it be the bond issue or like a MAPS project, yes, we do our best to estimate those costs and predict what future costs will be. But I think as you look at also what's included in those budgets is contingencies. So, we're constantly including project contingencies as a part of the project makeup of its cost. The unlisted for the bond issue is much like what we'll call program contingency in the MAPS or MAPS III programs. So, we build in some safeties to make sure that we can finish the work. We do that, again, on a project level, and then we do that on a program level. We obviously do have to complete the 2007 bond issue as promised to the voters, and that's exactly what we'll do. With the remaining funds that are there, we are watching it again very carefully. We feel that we have adequate contingency at both the project and program levels in the 2007 to complete all the projects.
I want to ask you about street resurfacing because we spent $8 million from the Fund Reserve last year on street resurfacing. We're looking at spending more from the Fund Reserve this year. There's, here's two methods of procuring funds other than spending, I mean, one is a partnership with the county that Larry talked about. One is using ACOG funds for resurfacing. What of the, of the Fund Reserve projects of the $8 million that we spent last year, how many of them were joint projects with other funding sources besides just ourselves?
I would guess, I could pull the sheet out, I would say maybe a fourth of them maybe had partnership projects with the counties. So, anywhere we have the opportunity to work with a county or another city, we have in the past year-plus have engaged other cities and counties to partner whenever possible. So, if they're willing to also come to the table, in the county's case, they can donate labor. In other cities' cases, like we're working with 150th with Edmund, they're going to donate half the material cost, and the county's going to participate with the labor. So, we're finding a lot of opportunities to save money, but obviously, in the core of the city, that's not always possible. We're having to do that where the counties and the city lines match up and where we've got joint projects together, but a lot, we're doing a lot of those, yes.
But we're very cognizant of that, and we don't leave, I won't say, we don't leave much money on the table with either ACOG or what we can get out of county participation. We actively go after those.
Okay, so that's a factor in addition to street condition and is whether we could, it could be a joint project with?
I think the other thing that you'll see like on today's agenda is we advance engineering in a lot of cases using the MFA. So, we get projects ready into the design phase, which make them ACOG-eligible. ACOG looks for projects that are ready for construction, not ones to start design. So, the more projects that we have on the shelf, ready to go, the more feasible that is for ACOG to approve those. And so, that's something we also continue to strive for in Oklahoma City.
When you, when you were talking to Pat about May, you said widening?
I need, I need to correct myself, Pat, and if I could go back to item AC, I was looking at notes for AB. It's not a widening, it's just a resurfacing.
Right, okay.
So I stand corrected on that. AB is a widening, AC is just a resurfacing only.
Okay. On, last question on AG, the Tax Increment Financing District reports, TIF number eight, we borrowed 7 million last year. Can you give me an update on, on how, on the refinancing of that debt?
No, but Brent can.
Thank you.
But we are going to have, before Brent speaks, we are going to have a comprehensive report in the next week or two on TIF eight and the financing, where we're on projects and where we're going, options for council on the future on that. But as far as the specific permanent financing of the fifth eight debt.
Yes, sir. Counselman, regarding TIF number eight, as this report poured in out, we had borrowed 60, roughly 69 million dollars, I believe, or 78, 77 million dollars to date. In the third quarter, we did not borrow any more money. The fourth quarter, we anticipate borrowing an additional 2.8 million dollars to cover our cash flow needs as we go through. We're currently working with our underwriters to do the refinancing of that loan in the, probably the latter part of November, and so we're progressing along well with that. And so we're hopeful to have that at that time taken out.
So we'll discuss that in the next couple of weeks?
We'll be discussing the status of the projects, and then we will be bringing back to you, once we finalize the financing, we'll bring that back to this body for their approval.
One of the things we talked about previously was we had variables going forward on the project, and some of those variables were what is the interest rate going to be when we turn, when we come up with the financing, and also the assessment of the, of the debt in the building. And those things are now being put into place, so we will be able to have a much more firm plan, to the point of actually issuing the final debt in later part of this year. But we do have, have, you know, we've got, four of the projects are essentially complete. The fifth streetscape project is over three-quarters complete, the Mary Garden stuff is done, the Vicentino Park is way on its way. So we're, again, a lot more, a lot fewer unknowns on the expense side of things, too. So we'll be able to talk about streetscape projects six and seven, and what those might include, or we can go for some other projects beyond that.
Okay, thank you.
But if I could ask related to those questions, I'm in favor of saving trees like everybody, but I could not read those numbers on that table, even with my glasses on. Can we print that a little bit larger next time?
Yes, ma'am, I will make an effort to modify that report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ready to vote the consent doc? All right, cast your votes, pass unanimously. On to the concurrence docket.
Move this subject individual.
Second.
Any individual considerations on the concurrence today? All right, cast your votes, pass unanimously. We're on to item eight. These are items that require a separate vote. We start with a series of zoning cases. The first is in Ward Three. The address is 12930 Northwest 10th Street. It's currently AA agricultural, and it would become a C3 community commercial district. Larry?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. I see the applicant. If you come forward and just give the council a brief picture of what the applicant intends to do. Did anybody sign up on this, Francis? There were no protests at the planning commission either.
Dennis Box, on behalf of the applicant, and Terrell Zorby and Caleb Hill are the applicants that will be developing this site. And on their behalf, I want to say thank you to councilman, because when we first started this, we were pushed very hard into looking at a PUD or a SPUD. And I think it's important, when you look at matching up next to cities, what kind of zoning you're looking at. And I know this council's been very interested in making sure that we don't have sales taxes slips away from our borders. If you look north of 10th Street, you'll find Yukon, which is a very intensely commercialized area. And so when we sat down and, and worked with Council Mcatee, he encouraged us to proceed forward. The commercial zoning that we were asking for was consistent with what was west of our property. It was also consistent with what zoning Yukon had, and has indicated the planning commission recommended approval. This will be a C-store with gasoline sales. We were able to resolve the issues that planning commission members raised, and we had no protests, and we'd ask your approval.
Unless the council has some comments, I'd move for approval.
Right. We have a motion and a second. We're voting on item 8A1. Cast your votes, pass unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Item 8A2 is a zoning case in Ward Five at 12209 South Western Avenue. It's currently AA agricultural and a PUD, and it would become a new planned unit development. David?
Thank you, Your Honor. Francis, has anyone signed up? Okay, this item has been recommended from the planning commission. It passed unanimously. There's been no protests, but I do have the owner's representative here. David, would you like to make a few comments? It's a multifamily unit project, and traditionally, sometimes those raises some questions, but I think this is going to be a very nice facility. And David, would you-
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. Also with me is Rob Coleman, Rob Sharp, and Kendall Dillon. As Counselman Greenwell said, anytime you have a multifamily project, it tends to create some protests. And here, we had a unique situation where we had no protest, and the planning commission unanimously recommended approval. And what you see here is a layout, and what my client does is a unique, community-based type of apartment complex. So instead of your typical apartment complex with just three-story buildings and a sea of parking, what they do is they create a sense of community with, here they'll have 16 buildings, and each building will be unique. And what their thought is, instead of you're driving into an apartment complex and you tell someone, "I live in building four," you would say, "Well, I live in the, you know, the red brick building," or "this colored building." So what they've committed to is four buildings that'll be 100% brick, and then 12 buildings that will be 100% hardy board. And like I said, that'll allow them to have variation in the way the buildings look, instead of just your standard 16 buildings that all look the same. And so with that, the planning commission unanimously recommended approval, and we would seek your approval as well.
That's an interesting concept. Do we have anything like that in Oklahoma City right now?
Not that I know of.
I don't think I'm familiar with anything that looks like that.
Thank you, David. And I think, again, everybody is looking forward to this development. You know, as I get older, giving up lawn work and things like that become more and more attractive. So, and we're seeing a change in demographics. People no longer are always looking for a home. These multifamily-type facilities, I think, are becoming increasingly popular with not only younger people, but as well as older people. So I would move that we approve this.
All right. We have a motion and a second. We're voting on item 8A2. Cast your votes, pass unanimously. Item 8A3 is in Ward Three at 1601 South Portland Avenue. It's currently a planned unit development and a scenic river overlay design district, and it would become a new SPUD. Larry?
Yes, Your Honor. Is the applicant present on this? I don't, this was approved unanimously by the planning commission. We are in close proximity to this with our facility on South West 15th and Portland. It's a very well-designed convenience store gas station, and the need for it was because they wanted to increase the number of pump sizes. It's indicative of the fact that the development is coming south of the river and should, should be a good starting point for that. So unless the council has any questions, I move for approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We'll be voting on item 8A3. Cast your votes, pass unanimously. Item 8A4 is a zoning case in Ward Two at 502 Northwest 57th Street. It's currently an R1 single-family residential and a C3 community commercial district, and it would be a new SPUD if approved. Ed?
This is to permit a storage facility. There's no protests. I'd, I'd move for approval. Let's-
All right, we're voting on that on item 8A4. Cast your votes, pass unanimously. Item 8B is the intentions of Crossing's Community Church to build some more athletic fields out far north Oklahoma City. Pat?
Thank you, Your Honor. The owner's representative is here, Brian Coons. Brian, you want to come forward? In case there are any questions of the council of this project, it's a, a new athletic facility for the Crossing School, the Crossing Schools, a outstanding private school that's developed out in that area. This is a mixed-use area. There's lots of different things in this particular area. Brian, would you like to-
Thank you for saying that, Brian Coon, representing the applicant. Not only have we dealt with staff working on this, but also the owners of the AT&T building have some agreements with them as far as what the architectural standards will be. And there'll be a lot of brick on the facing of this stadium, so just seek your approval.
Are there any questions of the applicant?
Is this for football?
Football, tennis, and baseball.
Okay.
And track. So they're all four.
All right. Did anybody sign up to speak on this one? Thank you. I'm the approval.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions on item 8B? Cast your votes, pass unanimously.
Thank you.
Item 8C has been stricken. So what does that mean for item 8C2? Are they both stricken?
No, it's just C1.
Okay, so item 8C1 has been stricken. We need to vote on item 8C2, which is a zoning case in Ward One. Gary, it's 13600 Northwest Stang Road.
Thank you, Your Honor. Has there anybody signed up to speak on this at all? Actually, one was the original request, strictly to go to R1, and in planning, they asked him to modify some things, and then he came forward with the PUD that is C2 that we're voting on here. So with no protest, I'll move approval.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
We're voting on item 8C2. Cast your votes, pass unanimously. Item 8D1 has already been voted. We're voting now on item 8D2. The address is 4141 Northwestern Avenue. It's currently O2 general office, and it would become a new simplified planned unit development if approved. And Ed, we have one person that has signed up to speak. You want to hear from that person?
Sure, and David, maybe David?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant, Don Hayes, who is also with me. This is an application that was recommended for approval by staff, but the planning commission recommended denial. When you look at this site, it's at 41st and Western. It's on the southwest corner of 41st and Western. Immediately north of this site and going all the way to 50th Street, you see a series of heavily zoned straight C4 properties. You have a mixed uses of restaurants, shops, boutiques, antique stores, just a whole host of uses. My client's property is currently zoned O2, and what he seeks to develop is a SPUD that allows limited commercial use. Now, Western has some traffic problems, so when we sat down to do this, we recognized that we had to come up with some commercial uses that weren't as intense as all those uses that are immediately to the north of us. So what you see in the SPUD is a series of boutiques, salons, things that are commercial in nature, but aren't as, as intense as you might see in all the other properties north of us. The restaurant use that we have included in the SPUD, we've limited to 1,300 square feet. And the reason we did that was, one of the concepts that has been proposed to my client is an intimate dining setting. So limiting it to only 1,300 square feet would, would mean that you're not going to see a bar, you're not going to see a big restaurant. It's just going to be a real small type of setting if it works. When my client set out to, to zone this property, he looked at Western Avenue Business District. And when you look at the Western Avenue Business District, it promotes restaurants, shopping, services, corporate, nonprofit, art galleries, health beauty, antiques furniture, and my client is subject to the Western Avenue Business Improvement Tax. So he has to pay taxes on a yearly basis that go to promote all of these uses you see on this board. But currently, he's not permitted to make use of his property for several of these uses. So what he wanted to do was to be able to utilize what Western Avenue has become, and it's a successful commercial corridor that hit, you know, part of his tax money he's going to promote. But while recognizing that the heavy, intense zone north of us may not be appropriate. So that's why you see a limited amount of commercial zoning, and I believe that's why staff recommended approval. Part of the discussion at the planning commission was that 41st Street should be the boundary of commercial. Well, when you look at where the Western Avenue Business District goes, it extends south of 36th all the way to 50th. If you're familiar with 36th and Western, there is commercial on both sides for about a block and a half. So to say that we need a hard line at 41st Street, we believe is, is already not happening. There is already commercial south of 41st Street, and what we've asked for is, is an appropriate, limited commercial use. There were no protesters that were at the planning commission hearing, and we would seek your approval.
All right. We do have one person that has signed up to speak. Judy McLaughlin? Good morning, Judy. We'll, you'll pull that microphone down a little bit. We'll need your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Judy McLaughlin. I live at 1106 Northwest 41st Street, which is next door west of the property in question, 4141 Northwestern.
So you're a block west of Western?
I am the second house from the corner of 41st and Western.
Okay.
And Mr. Hayes' property is next door to my east of my residence. And my main concern is the, the parking is very limited, no matter what type of entertainment criteria is put into that. If it's approved, there is no adequate parking. There's a salon right across the street from my home that was originally residential. It was rezoned for commercial. And when they applied for that salon, they showed where they had parking, where they would not be utilizing the residential street area. And that is not the case. The employees park on the street of 41st Street, and then their patrons use the parking behind the salon.
So they didn't either build enough parking?
Correct, yes. There's already congested parking created by VZDs, Nova, Sepango, even Musashi's, Sushi Niko. I love them being there, but there is not anywhere for people to park except on the streets, in the residences. That's my main concern. And also the fact of, I already have the bands and the, and the patrons at VZDs at 1:30, 2 o'clock in the morning, from 10:30 at night till early in the morning, and racing up and down Western on motorcycles. It's a congested area, and I was not aware of the restrictions, you know, for the commercial from 41st Street North, which is great. You know, those, those businesses have been there for generations, and so this would be something new. And I am totally 110% against it being rezoned.
Ed?
I want to back up and just, just talk about the corridor, and, and not, not talk about this property, but the whole corridor as holistically. This is the third conflict on this corridor between 36th and 50th. It's come before the council in the last six to eight weeks. Sam Bowman really struggled with trying to get, to figure all this out, staff, over the years. There are personality conflicts. After the last one on 43rd, they're sending text messages to each other as they're walking out of council, and now, I mean, it's just, it's, it's a, it's a difficult corridor, and we've got to change the process, I believe. We need diversity of housing and business development in Oklahoma City, and we saw something that before, we need walkable mixed-use development. But we need a plan. This is, this is a great corridor where this could take place, to develop mixed use, where you develop retail, where it's next to thriving neighborhoods and people can walk to businesses. But what we're doing here isn't working. We're developing it on an ad hoc basis, having conflict after conflict, some of it due to personalities and some of it just due to the lack of uniform rules or a plan. And so when we're trying to figure out how to develop a compact urban corridor, I think about the conversations that we had last week with Fort Worth and with Charlotte, and that is that, that maybe the answer is just to develop a- that is that maybe the answer is just to develop a zone overlay and develop form-based code for this corridor, and then we have, then we don't have this case-by-case basis. Then we don't have residents, and one concern I have is, I spoke with David three times, and I said, "Have you talked to the neighbor next door? Have you talked to the neighbor next door? Have you talked to the neighbor next door?" Three times. And then I get an email yesterday, and here you are. And we can't, this is just not the way to do this. And so what I would hope is, I've spoken with the University of Oklahoma. The University of Oklahoma's architecture program is willing to make a semester-long course, hire graduate assistants, do a charrette with the businesses, with the neighbors, get input from the neighborhoods, and see if during that semester-long course, you could develop form-based code and try and eliminate some of these conflicts. And if we can make it work on this corridor, then maybe we can extrapolate some of those lessons to another street, and then another street, and another street. But we have to figure out how to have development next to thriving neighborhoods. Now, I've spoken with, one issue is this parking issue. If you look at Google Maps, there is so much more capacity for parking in this area than we would ever need for the developments that there, and including this one, the behind Musashi's and...
Will Rogers.
Will Rogers. Across the street there from you on, well, on 41st, across the street on 40th, between 39th and 40th is a block-long surface parking lot that just sits empty. I've spoken with the church, and they are willing to allow businesses to use that surface parking lot between 39th and 40th for parking, except on Sundays during church, and maybe four or five nights a year when they have weddings and stuff like that. But otherwise, they've said, "We'll use our, we have an electronic sign, we'll direct traffic towards that." It's a block long. I mean, it's so, it would have more parking than this development would ever need. It's just developing a plan and getting all the people at that salon, getting all the people at whatever this turns out to be, if it's an intimate dining, getting them into that surface parking lot between 39th and 40th, and I really believe that has the potential to solve it, but we've all got to get together and develop a plan.
Well, and I understand that, but there's no protected crosswalks across Western, and more and more traffic is being generated all the time up and down Western, so it would really become a pedestrian hazard.
I'm very glad that you brought that up, because as part of the 2007 bond, we're going to spend about $1.5 million on this corridor, developing crosswalks, bringing traffic signals up to ADA compliance, trying to make it more walkable and make it more pedestrian-friendly. The question is, could you incorporate this form-based code in coming up with a plan, like we talked about last week, at the same time that you're making these streetscape improvements? I think it's a natural opportunity for public works and planning to integrate and work together. How do we use that $1.5 million of improvements to make it more walkable? We don't have to, let me just make one plug, we don't have to reinvent the wheel either. One thing that Fort Worth was talking about last year, last week, was the Institute of Transportation Engineers have developed, adopted by 92% of the 17,000, I mean, it's got 17,000 members, 92% approved. It's got design parameters, it has everything that city after city is starting to adapt this manual. You can download it for free. On this, we're talking about a 25-foot site triangle easement. I don't know why you need that now and you didn't have it before, but these are all things that you could have in a form-based code and a zone overlay, so that we're not doing it over and over and over on a case-by-case basis. You can work this all out with your streetscape, with your 2007 bond improvements, and you can have a plan, so that we're not reinventing the wheel with each ad hoc development.
My other main concern is the noise level, and I've made modifications on my home over the years because of the noise that comes from VZDs, and as well as, you know, when Mr. Hayes is outside his building, talking on the cell phone, it comes into my home, and I have double-pane windows. I have put an addition onto the back of my house where there are absolutely no windows and full insulation to try to reduce the noise next door, as well as off Western Street, just the traffic, to buffer that, and if, you know, a restaurant, something that's open during the night is going on over there, I work out of town four days a week, I come home, that is my place of rest, of recuperation, and if I have, you know, I'm okay, I have learned over the 16 years that I have owned my home, you know, that that's just what goes on from being the second street off, the second house off of Western, but I'm certainly opposed to adding to what's next door to me that will just compound what I already get from VZDs, just the traffic.
We get it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
David, do you want to say anything?
Yeah, if I could just address a couple things. One of the things that makes this site unique to the parking issue is we actually meet code for our parking. Several sites up and down Western, and a lot of the conflict has been about parking, not only do they not meet code, but they have no parking, so our site will meet code, we have ample parking, and that's part of what we looked at when we created the limited commercial uses. And as far as the neighbor to the west, I do apologize, we had not heard from her, no one had come to Planning Commission to protest. My client has spoken to her, and he's here to answer any of those questions, but in our spud, we specifically provide that we will screen, not only to the south, but we'll have site-proof screening along our Western boundary, and it's our hope that that would, you know, fix any potential problem that might be present.
Well, I know this was approved by staff. I guess I'd like to hear from staff on their opinions on this.
When we looked at it, it's already zoned O2, which allows multiple office uses. With their limitations on the uses, the commercial uses they added, and the fact that they do meet the parking, we felt that it was a reasonable application. That's why we recommended approval.
Okay. Yeah, I heard a light go on over here. Is that Meg or Skip?
Go ahead.
I just had a very quick one, David, maybe for you. If you're talking about a limited seating dining restaurant, have you limited the hours or what would the opening hours be? Don, have you thought about that?
Don Hayes, 4141 Northwestern. No, this was one of the gentlemen that owned the restaurant in Nichols Hills Plaza was talking about doing a bakery and a coffee shop, and having just a limited, like the Saturn Grill, like a limited salad menu, and then maybe one event scenario where he might have four or five white tablecloths, and it would only be an event, like, you know, something that's already been booked.
So if we're talking bakery and salads and things, would there be the need for it to be open until 2:00 AM, where the bars are across the street, or?
I didn't, he wasn't talking about hours of operation as far as 2:00 AM or...
I might throw that out as something that we could discuss in any case, just in consideration of your next-door neighbor.
Right. Well, I'm sorry that Judy has a parking problem. I noticed that, I mean, the area does have, you know, a lot of noise. I'm there. She's there part of the time, I'm there part of the time. Neither one of us are there all the time. And I've let family members park in my parking lot for her to have access, and people park across the street, but that's mainly because the area is successful, you know? It's like, it's a nice corridor in Oklahoma City that is successful. If it wasn't, we would all have a different problem. So we're just promoting an opportunity to do some uses that are not going to be offensive as far as hours of operation. I don't think a cafe would be open till 2:00 in the morning if it were to be that, because I've got other uses that are probably a little bit more interested that wouldn't be, you know? So, anyway, I appreciate your concern, and I appreciate your support on this matter as well.
All right. Skip, do you want to say something?
Well, I, the Planning Commission, is there any commercial development at all that's should not extend south of Northwest 41st Street?
Yeah, there are several commercials south of 41st Street. This map, anything that is colored, and there's purple, orange, and here is 36th Street. You can see, starting at 36th, you have, and you have, there's a bar on the west side, there's a furniture store that extends the entire block, 36 going north. Immediately south of 36th is zoned commercial, so there are certainly several uses that are commercial south of 41st. There's just about a two-block lapse, and then it gets into commercial again as you go to 36th. So that was part of our reasoning, is 41st is not a line right now that commercial stops. It already goes south of 36th.
Along with two churches, I mean, it's not residential as it's pointing, I mean, there's two churches and multiple businesses south of 41st. Can you, I mean, if you've got a salon on the north side of 41st that extends further into the neighborhood than this, on what grounds can you deny? I understand it's a spud, and you've got different...
Well, the spud, really, I mean, you have the discretion to deny it, but whether or not we could defend it in court is a different question. The, it's on Western, and there are already some retail and commercial uses on Western, including alcoholic beverages, so the, it's really up to what the council wants to do, and whether or not you could defend this in court is, you know, 50/50.
I'd like to, if there's no other comments, go ahead.
This is really directed back to either staff or city manager. What are the rules to put in signs alongside 41st Street to indicate no parking? Is there any type of problem?
Would that be Traffic Commission item?
Exactly. If there's some cases there, we could bring that, of course, through the Traffic Commission, some mayor pointed out, to solve those if needed.
If it's a problem, I would suggest we look into that. And then the second question, what's the criterion determining when a street will be wide and safe from two-lane to four-lane? For example, Western Avenue, 36th up to 50th Street, is it based solely upon the amount of traffic that goes up and down the street?
That's the general criteria. Obviously, this has some unique physical characteristics that make it difficult.
And if I may, if, having not known that we had a protest, if you'd like us to continue it, to have an opportunity to sit down with her, we're more than willing to do that.
Well, what I want to do is have, again, this meeting on October 9th, it's at the church across there on 39th, and have the Business Improvement District, have the neighbors, have everybody get together with our Public Works Department, our planning, and let's start talking about how we can make a plan. You know, I, you guys handle a lot of these applications. I don't think it's adequate to say nobody was at, there was no protest at Planning, and we never heard from her. I would encourage for the next application, go knock on the door. I mean, we know that this, I mean, I just, I want aggressive, you know, seeking out the neighbors and starting a dialogue the day before it's, we're hearing it here.
Well, Judy and the salon both came to me when the application went out in the 300-foot radius, and they both wanted to know exactly what I was wanting to do, and I told them that, you know, my intent is to either have a gallery or a coffee shop bakery, you know, and some of these other uses go hand-in-hand with the area, because I've been approached by a salon and spa as well, two of them, as a matter of fact, to come into this area. So they didn't show any concerns at that point in time, and I asked them, you know, nobody had any concern. Judy had a concern about parking, and the lady across the street said, "Well, we've ," and noise, and she said, "Well, we've got that with what's going on over here." And I'm like, "Well, I'm, my parking's going to stay right here where it is." Now, if I have a gallery in there that has nice art and coffee and, you know, some baked goods, and all of a sudden, they're hugely successful, you know, and they have an event like in Faseo has like, I can't help it if somebody's hugely successful, but I do know that this area is, you know, as far as the uses, we haven't asked for anything that's going to be offensive like a bar or tavern. That would be a complication, in my opinion. That's why I haven't stretched out for a different type of zoning. That's why I'm coordinating with the city staff and, you know, legal counsel. And in the meantime, when they did come over, I tried to address their issues, and I didn't get any feedback, and I haven't had any feedback until today, and I've been out of town for the last two and a half weeks, so.
The only thing I would add to my comments of a few minutes ago is that when you have a staff report that recommends it for approval, it's very difficult to defend a denial, because you have a city witness essentially who's saying that the application should be approved, so that's a, that makes it more difficult to defend a denial, so. And also, it is not an ABC three or anything like that, it would have to be an eating establishment.
Well, I'm going to move that we adopt the recommendations of city staff, and that we approve the application with the plan to move forward on October 9th, and coming to some, trying to develop form-based code and get some uniform rules, so that we have less conflict in the future.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously.
You know, I should clarify something in my mind. The study that we're going to do will have no impact as far as the zoning on this particular piece of property is concerned, it's already been zoned. The study that you're talking about doing, starting October 9th, as I guess you said, will have no impact on what we do here this morning.
That's correct.
Other than maybe trying to figure out long-term parking solutions.
I understand that, but as far as the zoning is concerned, this particular property, it's finished after we vote today.
All right. Item 8E is an item that's been before the council before. This is a final hearing on the rental car ordinance. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on item 8E? All right, looks like we're good to go. Cast your votes. Item 8E passes unanimously. Item 8F, this is a public hearing, and this is an opportunity to renew the downtown bid.
Mr. Mayor, there is a small change that needs to be made this morning, and there's a change of use as one of the properties, and it affected their ultimate assessment. Brent, can you provide us the specifics on that?
Yes, sir. Yesterday, we were notified by a property owner that bought some property back in May of 2011 that was a one-time commercial. It subsequently has been changed to residential. The role that you have before you today has their assessment as commercial, and it should be a residential. I'd like to point you to page 23 of the assessment rule. It's under R01019992 for Robert Lewis. His amount was noted as $77.03. We need to change that to $73.72. We'll also need to do the same thing on item G2, on the item following this one. Again, we need to amend that to $73.72.
All right. Which I think is somewhat remarkable, considering the size, both the number of properties and the dollar amounts that we've got, that this is the only adjustment we're making on it, so I guess.
All right, so do we need a motion on the amendment, I assume?
Move the amendment.
All right, let's vote on the amendment, and then we have someone who signed up to speak, and we need to hear from them. So the amendment passes unanimously. David Moss?
Okay.
Was, the amendment took care of your issue? All right. Thanks for coming down, anyway. All right, now we need a motion on item 8F2.
Move the amendment.
All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And item 8G is a companion item, and this one, it looks like it's going to need the emergency as well.
Well, we need the amendment first.
Move the amendment.
Oh, we need the amendment on item 8G as well? Okay, good point. Okay, voted on the amendment on item 8G, and the amendment passes. Now we need to vote on item 8G.
Move the amendment.
All right, cast your votes on that, and it passed unanimously. And do we need the emergency? And do we need the emergency?
Yes.
How about the, cast your votes and the emergency passes eight-zero. On to item eight H, it's a couple of items that have come to us from the Traffic Commission. The first, actually, both of them are in Ward Six. Meg, you okay with these?
I agree.
All right, we're voting on item eight H one. Do we have a second?
Yes.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And then Meg, you want to make a note on eight H two? Cast your votes there and it passed unanimously. Item eight I is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under eight I? All right, has anyone signed up to speak? All right, looks like we're good to go. I want a motion. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item eight J is unsecured structures. We have a long list here and it's a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under eight J?
Yes.
All right, we have a second? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item eight K is a series of revocable permits. The first is in Ward Seven. It's the Sixth Annual Soul Food Festival, which will be held October sixth. Is there anyone here representing this event? All right, Skip, you want to make a motion? Prove it. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. That'll be in Ward Seven on October sixth. And item eight K two is also in Ward Seven. This is the annual Oklahoma Rigata Festival, which will take place this weekend. Is there anyone here representing this event? All right, Skip, you want to make a motion?
Recommend we approve.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And item eight K three is the Mesta Festa, which will take place this weekend if approved on North Chertel. Meg, it's in Ward Six.
Yep, all kinds of great activities planned for this weekend, or for September twenty-ninth. I'd move approval.
Anyone here to represent this organization? All right, cast your votes and the revocable permit is extended. On to item eight L, it's the Redman Triathlon, which was held this past weekend, just working its way in front of us. Motion here?
Move the item.
Do we have a second? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously.
I'd like to make just one comment. The traffic worked out pretty well this year. There was a lot of advance notice and the police at the intersections were accommodating people when there was no bicycles crossing through there, let the people through the intersection, so I had no complaints. It worked out pretty well.
All right. Glad to hear that. And we move on to item eight M, which is a case that's taking place in Ward One at the intersection of Harvest Hills Road and Northwest Hundred and Second Street. And Gary, we have a series of people that have signed up this morning to speak on this item.
Okay.
You want to hear from them first?
Yes, please.
All right, Steve Wolford. Each person will have three minutes to speak. We appreciate your patience with us this morning.
My name is Steve Wolford and the address is 10212 Harvest Hills Road in Oklahoma City.
All right.
Okay, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak. And I am here on behalf of over seventy residents appealing the decision made by the OKC Traffic Commission because the stop signs that were installed are unnecessary, unwarranted, and because this intersection does not meet one single criteria or requirement the city has for this type of stop control, not a single one. In the report prepared by city staff, by city traffic engineers, their recommendation to the Traffic Commission was the request install the stop signs be denied. The study conducted by city staff examined vehicle per day count, collision history, decision site distance, speed, et cetera. As an example, the vehicle per day count was forty-six percent of the minimum requirement, not even half of the minimum. Also, the report stated no reported collisions in the past three years. I have lived at that intersection for over twenty-five years and there has never been an accident in that timeframe. The city has numerous criteria, requirements, rules, policies, et cetera, for installing four-way stop control and as stated, this intersection does not meet a single one of these and is the reason the city traffic engineers recommended the request be denied.
Right.
There were no compelling reasons, no compelling facts, no compelling data that would lead the commission to ignore or overrule the Traffic Management Division's study, report, and recommendation, which leads to the question, why do taxpayers pay for cities' professional staff to do their job, but the Traffic Commission then ignores their recommendation? We believe the commission made a big mistake by ignoring all the facts and data and approving a request which does not meet one single criteria or requirement. This is especially true since there are other options and other signs which could, which would better accomplish the goals and be within the city guidelines. There was no legitimate or factual basis nor compelling reason for the commission to vote to approve the request. Therefore, the seventy-plus residents are appealing the vote and request it be reversed.
Steve, thank you for coming down. Chad Sagehorn?
My name is Chad Sagehorn. I live at 10405 Harvest Moon Avenue and I am the current president of our HLA. And my wife and I moved into Harvest Hills a couple of years ago. We have six grandkids and we immediately got on the board because we wanted to protect the value of our home and the safety of our neighborhood. And I've received numerous phone calls from citizens, neighbors in the neighborhood that are thanking us for putting a stop sign in. They are seeing noticeable difference in traffic flow coming around that corner for the park because the kids are playing there in the water park. I've received a lot of positive feedback. The traffic study was done during the summer and I believe if you did that traffic study now while the school is in session, I believe you'll see a huge difference in the traffic flow in our neighborhood. I have seen a noticeable difference. I'm not riding my granddaughter, riding on her bikes in the neighborhood at night. I've seen a difference in the traffic. I believe the stop sign, because of the way our neighborhood is situated, it becomes a cut-through between Council and Northwest Expressway. A lot of cars have been cutting through to avoid the stop sign, or stoplight at Council and Northwest Expressway. And we are seeing a lot less cars riding through the neighborhood now. That extra stop sign is now taking them longer to go through the neighborhood than just go on down to the stop sign. I'm asking you all to uphold the Traffic Commission's decision to install it and once again, voted on it to keep it.
All right, thanks. Don Schuphardt?
Don Schuphardt, I live at 1021 Harvest Moon, which is not within three hundred feet of the signs, but I have been in the community for nearly thirty years. I am concerned when we have contention and it reflects on the neighborhood, especially when it leads to three Traffic Commission meetings and a meeting of new gentlemen and ladies. Taking God only knows how many hours of productive time away from jobs, time that could be used for other things, so we multiply by two the time we've spent. But I, our community has three hundred and twelve residents. I have one three hundred and twelfth at least that much stake in what goes on in the community. I've been active as board president. I've been active in every, just about every aspect of Harvest Hills Homewards Association. And Mr. Wolford talked about not meeting any criteria, not meeting the criteria. Well, it turns out that some of the criteria is for people, that's the reason we have people on, on commissions, people on councils, to add some brain power to these cold data, cold data. Well, the data said eighty-five percent of the traffic that went through there was at the speed limit or below. The speed limit actually is twenty-five and that eighty, excuse me, that eighty-five percent was at twenty-eight miles per hour, okay? So it says fifteen percent are going faster than twenty-eight. And there was a ticket given and I believe it was at thirty-two miles per hour. So the, the real reason why it was approved twice now for commissions was because, not because of the criteria, but because of a safety issue, which will be addressed, I'm sure. But just around the corner, two hundred feet, I believe it is, from the intersection that we're talking about, is this park, Harvest Hills Park, used by many people, come in there from daycare centers and the school and people in the neighborhood, people walking in the streets. And we do not want very high-speed traffic through there because it's very dangerous. I have personally experienced a situation around the park after coming around the corner where twenty-five miles an hour, way too fast, I reduced my speed to at least fifteen, twenty miles per hour and expecting kids to come out between the cars and stuff like that. So the traffic has slowed down and you'll hear, can hear about that. And it hasn't accomplished, I think, what we need. The thing we don't want in the way of cohesion data is for somebody to be killed there because we didn't have traffic slowed down and because we removed the stop sign. And I think the main reason was not meeting the criteria that we are here today and three other council, or commission meetings is because at least one individual had been very upset because of the stop sign on their corner. Well, I, I guess I sympathize with them, but I don't empathize with them.
All right, Don, thank you. Leveta Gregg?
Leveta Gregg, ten three oh one Harvest Moon Avenue, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma. I have more than three minutes to say, that's why I emailed each of you councilmen with all my facts. I'm the lady who walked the two commissions, the two petitions. It was a, it started as a safety issue. The commission heard it, passed it, installed it. The council, we had a protest by Mr. Wolford. The municipal council wisely asked it to be rescinded and another petition passed. I passed that one. The commission followed the guidelines, all the requirements was met. They approved it again. We have four corners at that intersection. We have three happy residents and one unhappy resident. This is one four-way stop sign in the city of Oklahoma City that is working as a safety issue. Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming down. Pauline Johnson?
Pauline Johnson, I live at eighty-three hundred Northwest Hundred Second Street, Oklahoma City. I have lived in the house on that corner since nineteen seventy-five and seen many changes in traffic and people walking, children and adults. I was very pleased when the four-way stop went in because I had observed many cars going much above the twenty-five mile speed zone limit. Unfortunately, people don't always observe the speed zone signs, but this stop sign has improved that greatly. I came up behind a boy on a bicycle a few months ago who was not watching and I thought, I better move over. And I got to the middle of the street and he turned right in front of my car without looking to see if there was one. Had I been going thirty or thirty-five miles an hour, there probably would have been a tragic accident. We don't want to have an accident before we decide to do something to make it safe for walkers, bicyclers, skateboarders, children and adults. Thank you.
Pauline, thank you. Charles Sheets?
Charles Sheets, eighty-two twenty-one Northwest Hundred Second Street. I live on the northeast corner of the, where the area we're talking about. Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of this council, I appreciate you coming down here and talking to you about this. This is something that shouldn't have to happen. If you lived on that street, you would know what I'm talking about. I left Oklahoma City in nineteen seventy-three and moved to the Dallas-Fort Worth area, came back here and retired because of my grandkids, I guess you might say. When I looked, came, would come up here to visit my son and we would go looking for a house, we always wound up in Harvest Hills. Talked to the real estate people and they said, this is a very fine place, quiet place to live. After I bought the house in nineteen seventy-three or four, when I bought the house, it wasn't very long till I realized I had bought a firsthand view of a racetrack. Cars come, that street, you come off of Northwest Expressway and coming down Harvest Hills, there's a long straightaway there. And I have literally parked and taken after cars and clocked them up to fifty-five to sixty miles an hour. And I called the police department to have them come out and check it a number of years This, since I've lived there, cars have run across my driveway, knocked the mailbox down, the one that had closed in the brick area, knocked their mailbox down and down the street away, knocked their concrete down. I think there's four mailboxes been knocked down and two or three trees in the yard this size. And where the park is down there, there was a big post about this big round, about this tall. Three of those were knocked down about a year or so ago and they have moved those posts down. We have the water park down there and this is full of kids all summer down there. I imagine there's probably fifty, sixty kids and adults down there and there's cars parked on both sides. These cars come down through there and just when they pass my house, there's a bend there that, that park, they start slowing down. That's when they start slowing down some. But this is dangerous and to lift this, leave this sign there, you may be preventing some child getting killed. Two weeks ago, wife and I were on our way to church, Sunday afternoon. There were literally thirteen kids, I counted them, there were straight, all the way across that street. I tooted my horn, slowed down, moved way over to the side and these kids wouldn't move, if you know something. They also go up and down the street and play basketball. On the, the curbs on these houses are like this and the basketball, if they, when it comes through the door, it'll bounce, go out the street and they'll go out there and never look. I honked my hand, my horn several times. So anyway, this is a way to prevent accidents. It doesn't stop, everybody doesn't stop, they'll slow down and go, but at least they're slowing down, if that's one thing they're doing. And I appreciate that you leave this sign there. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Charles. Glenna Wallace?
My name's Glenna Wallace. I live at 10304 Harvest Moon Avenue and I just want to say thank you for letting us talk today. And I'm a member of crossings and I want to say thank you for, for voting for that today for the land, okay? I guess I'm the last one to speak, so my last ounce of courage is to hope that the council will vote for this stop sign. We are very interested in taking care of this issue. It's been on our agenda for so long and I hope you approve of this.
All right. Thank you for coming down. Gary, in Ward One. I'll let you have a final word, but I want to hear from the councilman first.
Well, since this is my neighborhood association, as you can imagine, I've heard, gotten a lot of advice on this, both solicited and unsolicited, but it certainly has been a discussion point in the neighborhood for a long time. Having seen the growth in that neighborhood out there and, and seen what's going on, I've lived in that, I've lived in that neighborhood now for eighteen years and I've lived in the general area for a long, long time. I agree with a couple of things that have been said here today. It has become a cut-through. The Council Road and Northwest Expressway intersection has become very congested with our growth out there. So if you're heading east on Northwest Highway and you want to go north on Council, that's the quickest route to get there. the quickest route to get there. We have a very successful spray park, one of our city parks is there, and it is packed all summer long. I get numerous complaints from the residents that the people coming to the park fill up the curbs and driveways and everything else for parking because it has become so successful. The grade school, the in-and-out traffic at beginning and ending of school, and then just the kids walking in general is a concern there. There is just a lot of growth going on. So, you know, I believe all of that warrants it. I do, Steve, if you step forward, I've got a question for you real quick. We've heard your concerns about the, whether or not they followed policy and the guidelines and so forth, but if you could just tell me real quick, in a general sense, taking all of the guideline issue out of it, why are you opposed to stopping traffic on that road?
Okay, the reason that I'm opposed is that there is an issue with the park, there is an issue with the school. However, those are some 400, 500 feet after the stop sign. It's way down, they're trying to fix a problem that happens over here by putting a stop sign over here. And as I mentioned, there are other ways to do that. The city has criteria for stop signs, but they could install signs that say, "Slow, park ahead, slow, curve ahead, slow, children playing," you know, all kinds of different signs like that to alert people that there is something up ahead that they need to be aware of. Okay? The other reason also is that I have a form here that can be downloaded from the Traffic Commission's website. Just find it. It says here, "The city of Oklahoma City does not install stop signs for the purpose of reducing speed. Numerous studies have shown that the installation of unwanted stop signs actually increases the top speed of motors between signs. Unwanted stop signs increase delay, emissions and noise. They are soon ignored by drivers who realize they are unnecessary." And that's exactly what's happened since these stop signs have been installed, because since the issue, since the problem that they're trying to solve happens after the curve, happens way up ahead, people have realized that these stop signs way back here, you know, are totally unnecessary and don't address the problem up ahead. And that's the issue, because at my house now, I have a lot more noise because people stop, and then they start up again, and there's just a lot more noise. And also, you know, I'm sure that the pollution issue, because as I said, you know, unnecessary stops, as the study says, you know, increase, increases pollution.
Well, I've got to respectfully disagree with you on this one, because I think what happens is, without the stop sign, they have an unrestricted acceleration space from the stop sign on 98th or 99th, wherever it is, and they enter the curve being able to utilize that straightaway. I think the stop sign at least gets them back to having to start up again, and then by the time they hit the curve, they haven't been able to gain the speed that they would have gained in the straight stretch going down through there. I just, I do believe it's having an effect on that going down through there. So I'll just have to respectfully disagree with you on that one.
Steve, we appreciate all the concern you've put into this issue. I can tell you-
Okay. Could I respond to some of the comments that were made?
Well, I don't know that it's necessary. Gary, are you going to make a motion to approve? I'll ask the council. Do you want to hear any more? Okay, the motion would, well, okay, if we get to that point, I don't know what Gary's motion's going to be. But is there anyone else that wants to hear from Steve?
Could I not at least, you know, respond to some of the comments that were made, please?
Hold on just a second. I'm going to see if the council is interested in hearing it. I think we've heard enough, Steve. Thanks. Gary, you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to, let's see, to deny the appeal.
Okay. Do a second. All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Okay, we have struck item 8N, and we're down to item 8O, which is changing some policies on the housing programs. Russell Klaus should be here. Sure he'll be here in a second. There he is.
This is our policies related to our housing loan program, and essentially what we're trying to do here is to improve the application of the program to facilitate an easier process for the recipients of loans, so I'd be happy to answer any questions on that.
All right. Any comments or questions for Russell on item 8O? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8P is a salary continuation for a sergeant. I understand we do not need executive session on this item?
That's correct.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8Q, I understand we do not need executive session on this item?
That's correct.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8R, I understand we do not need executive session on this item?
That's correct. We'll give a briefing on that next week.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8S is claims recommended for denial. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under 8S? All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes, and those claims are denied. Item 9 is claims recommended for approval. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under item 9? All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes. Claims are approved. Item 10 is items from council. Pat, you want to get us started today? All right, Skip? Meg? David? Larry?
I'd like to congratulate the friends of Northwest 10th Street for a great auction and banquet they had this past Thursday. I'd like to thank those from city staff, King Cooper Hart from planning, Rick Wall from inspection, and also the police for lending their support. This organization raised several thousands of dollars, again, to improve Northwest 10th Street, and it's an example of what can happen when neighborhoods and businesses come together for a common cause. Thank you, Your Honor.
All right. Ed? And Gary? Okay. We're on to city manager reports. We've already heard from Mike Carrier, and I think David Todd has an update on the MAPS 3 projects.
That's correct.
All right, well, good morning. I'm pleased to be here this morning to give you a quick update here on MAPS 3. Just a quick background here, if you remember, $777 million on eight projects, tax collection, seven years, nine months, and it began April 1st, 2010. And currently, the collections are ahead of projections. The projects that we have is the downtown park, Trails and Sidewalks, the Transit Modern Streetcar, Convention Center, Senior Health and Wellness Centers, Oklahoma State Fairgrounds improvements, and improvements at the river. Let's start off with the park. $132 million is set aside for that project, 40-acre Upper Park and a 30-acre Lower Park. You can see basically how it's split. It'll be done in different phases. There's the basic layout of the upper and lower park. You can see the upper park in green, lower park in red. It's basically split between the new I-40 alignment. We're currently working on the upper park. The lower park isn't set to start until 2014. Right now, we've acquired approximately 95% of the land for the upper park. Demolition for the post office has been completed, except for the little maintenance facility that will be done towards the end of the year. We have engaged Hargraves and Associates to do the master plan in Phase 1 of this project. We had some very successful public meeting two weeks ago and some focus groups that we've already started. Very pleased with how that's come about, and Phase 1 construction will begin in the summer of 2013. The streetcar, $128 million project to put a rail-based streetcar through downtown. Right now, the subcommittee has recommended a route that you have seen. Santa Fe Station has been recommended as the transit hub. We're currently trying to negotiate purchase of that. Jacobs Engineering has been engaged as our consultant for the program, and we're working with them, various parts of the streetcar. This is the alignment that the subcommittee recommends, like I said, that you have seen. You can see that it engages the Chesapeake Arena, the Convention Center site, and the park, and down, over to Bricktown, and on up to Midtown. Convention Center, $252 million project. Here's the site that we're working on right now. The acquisition of the property is underway. We're presenting today to the subcommittee, recommendation authorize us to negotiate a contract so that we can get started, and we'll have a consultant onboard, and once we get this consultant onboard, then we'll have all the players in place that we can start with these coordination meetings that have been talked about so much. Oklahoma River is a very exciting project, $57 million, will be done in four phases. We've already started the racecourse lighting, that is under construction. Windscreen is in design, and we're getting ready to do interviews for Phase 2, which is the additional starting systems, lighting, docks, racecourse cameras, excuse me. And we're also, right now, in design with Whitewater Facility, which I think is going to be a very, very exciting project down there. So like I said, we've got a lot of people working on river projects right now. Whitewater Facility is scheduled to open in October of 2013. State Fairgrounds, $58 million for projects out there, relocation of the carnival area, and then an exposition building. Phase 1 is underway. They just completed observations of the fair operations as they went just last week. So we'll be getting the master plan back that will show us how the best to relocate the carnival area, and then we'll soon be engaging a consultant for the exposition center so that we can help coordinate that with the new building.
And back to that, we actually awarded the contract today for the civils grading package at the top of the fairgrounds.
Correct. Health and Wellness Centers, been talked about a lot, $52 million for as many as four The architect has been selected to do the design, once we select where we're going to do and what we're going to do. This week, we're reissuing the RFP to the subcommittee for them to review so that they can, well, so that we can reissue that to the public so we can get our operating partner onboard. Like I said, there's been a lot of talk about that, so hopefully we can get that back out on the street and get an operating partner engaged. Trails and Sidewalks, $39 million for trails. Basically have three, I'm sorry, four trail projects that we have right now. We're working on the first one, which is the river trail, which goes from Meridian all the way out to Lake Overholser. We have two engineers working on two phases of that, and it's well underway, and we should be acquiring right away here soon for that project. Sidewalks, $9 million for sidewalks. Subcommittee will receive another version of the master plan, and it will be up for them to decide how we're going to proceed on the sidewalks that you've seen. The project implementation plan has the timeline. We're still adhering to the timeline. I'm sure you're familiar with that. Continuing with subcommittee meetings, advisory board meetings, and just proceeding with the project as we're supposed to. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Going back to this slide on the transit, could you, the map basically shows a line from, you said, the Chesapeake Center to the park. Is this the rail system?
Yes, sir. That's the preferred route that the subcommittee has recommended.
What's the farthest north?
I believe it goes all the way up to 13th Street.
So it looks like that 70% of what I would identify as far as points of destination from point A to point B of one destination to another destination being the park, the convention center, the gardens are really, you know, walkable. I mean, if you're only just going up to, then to 13th Street. But it just seems like that that's not what a real rail would provide as far as a real service need of transportation. It seems like that that's more of, you know, area that a person could walk easily, but I just wanted to get a clarification. The other issue that I have is the sidewalks, and that I recall that when we presented the list from the subcommittee, that I had an issue because there wasn't any listing of sidewalks in Ward 7. And has that been revisited? If not, I will continue to make that, to advocate for that issue, because I think that whoever's looking at the sidewalk issues, that there is something that's being left out, and a big part of it, as it relates to some parts of these wards, that I think is just, you know, disingenuous to not engage the density issues of some of the areas that sidewalks definitely need to be a part of, so.
What is the status of that report, Dave?
It's going back to the subcommittee tomorrow.
But what has been done is we've taken a more, a less conservative cost estimate. They had a very conservative cost estimate. They came up with those numbers. We've gone with a more moderate cost estimate on it, which has expanded the miles in some of the areas to be covered.
Is it going to be, though, more inclusive of the eight wards, or is more wards than was originally put out?
What we have right now is the same process that we had before, is based on the criteria, and as those alignments, as we're calling them, come out, that's what we're going with. So we're not, at this point, we haven't broken it out equally per ward. It's just outfall-
Does the less conservative approach allow us to do more projects that would allow more wards to be involved?
It does somewhat, but still, there are some wards that have more needs. The inner-city wards have higher scores than the outlying wards do.
Okay. Well, I guess we'll await the report.
Your Honor-
Yeah, Larry?
And I've talked to Jim about this before, and I agree with Councilman Kelly. Ward 3 also has some challenges as far as the number of miles, and the original intent, when this first came out on the MAPS 3, it was my assumption that we were going to divide the number of miles of sidewalks evenly with that throughout the city so that all the taxpayers would receive some benefit. Obviously, there can't be a sidewalk in front of every school or every public facility or every neighborhood, but I think some attention needs to be given in these early phases, Jim and Mayor, to kind of making this an even geog- phases, Jim and Mayor, to kind of making this an even geographic split on the sidewalks.
We hear you.
I will make sure the Subcommittee knows that.
All right. Yeah, Ed?
I want to speak to what Skip talked about on the route. I went to a Transit Summit last week in California with some of the nation's thought leaders, and several of which were familiar with what we're trying to do here, and certainly I got contradictory feedback, but, but to say, clearly, there's, a couplet is controversial. I mean, to go one way on this street and then have to walk over to the other street and go back. I mean, some are okay with it, most weren't, but it's certainly controversial. And, you know, one individual who I would consider a nation's thought leader told me that he thought we would struggle with ridership, and that really, we needed to think of this more as a real estate development tool than necessarily a transit system, that maybe it's a first step to a transit system. But real estate development is at least as much a consideration as ridership in the beginning, and that, and he thought we would struggle with that. I talked with the gentleman who developed the nuts and bolts of the Portland Streetcar, and he thought similar thoughts. So I guess one question would be, how was this route developed? I mean, is it the Subcommittee? I mean, did we have consultants study this route?
This route was done through the Subcommittee. It was also done through, I believe, the Alternatives Analysis. But remember that we've got Jacobs Engineering on now, and one of their first and main tasks is to go through this alignment and verify that this is what we should be doing, based on a lot of things, based on utility conflicts, based on some ridership, but also a lot on the economics and the development potential in the area.
So that is in their scope of work?
Yeah, and I would say, you know, just because it can't be said enough, that it needs to be based on cost, because if you look at, there's kind of three, three standards for rail-based projects. They cost more than you thought, they take longer to build than you thought, and ridership is higher than you expected. Those are kind of three standards around the country. But there are no more dollars with Maps Three. This is a finite amount of money, and I don't think we can say it out loud enough to that consultant, that do not start building something we can't afford to finish.
Yes, sir.
And maybe a fourth component, Mayor, is O and M. I mean, when do we start having a conversation about what it costs to maintain this streetcar system? Maintain the park?
That's also part of the Jacobs contract, as far as the, the streetcar is. They are going to produce that kind of information. And then also with, with the Hargraves contract, they have operational people within their team that they're going to be providing that for us.
So you would expect, as we move through the next six months, to start to have a clearer picture of what our total O and M is going to be for all, Convention Center, Park, Streetcar, River, all of which presumably are going to come out of the general fund?
I do. I'd say between six and 12 months is for the, for the streetcar and for the park.
Okay.
The river, we anticipate, remember, there's a resolution being adopted to have the the Bodhouse Foundation do the operation on the river.
Okay. How much are far, how much ahead of projections are we right now?
Approximately 9% is our last, our last report.
And we collected 190 million?
We're, the July 31st report is 210.
Okay, so we're 18, we're almost 20 million ahead of projections in terms of collect?
I don't know if that's total, Councilman. I just know the last, last few months, we've been getting nine to 14.
Doug, let's let Doug answer that.
Yeah, I don't have, I was just looking at the figures yesterday. I don't have them with me, but we're in the range of $10 million over projections at this point, with still a number of years left to go, so.
Let me ask you one more question on the Jacobs group, because another warning that I was given last week was, and this goes back to the silos and integration, it's not just integration with the other Maps Three projects, but integration with our bus system, with the total public transit system. How does the streetcar interface with our bus system? Will it replace some routes? How can they work together? And so will Jacobs, how did those two entities talk to each other in terms of planning route and planning economies of scale, and how those two systems are going to work together?
Fortunately, Jacobs is very familiar with Cottin and Rick's group, so we'll make sure that all that is also coordinated. I can't tell you right now.
Cottin attends every, every Monastery Car Subcommittee meeting.
Okay. But the final, final thing on sidewalks, I mean, I just, I would take issue with, with the contention that it should be split throughout the ward evenly. I don't, I don't think the need is there evenly. We're not splitting trails, just the component we talked about on trails in Ward Three a couple of weeks ago, dwarfs, basically are, is a huge amount of the entire budget. So trails are not being split evenly throughout the wards, and that's a much bigger budget than sidewalks. We went 40 years in this city. We didn't build any sidewalks from 1960 to 2000, and I think you need to take a look at where that development was in that 40 years. So it's, I think it needs to be need-based and not just evenly distributed.
Okay. All right. David, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I do want to highlight one other City Manager Report, the Southman, that's CAD to CAD dispatch with IMSA and the Fire Department. The interface went live on Tuesday, July 24th, and the report indicates that we've had about a 30% reduction of Fire Department emergency medical responses during that time, as we followed the new protocol. And so we're still monitoring it and watching as we go forward and trying to work through that, but that's, our expectation was about a 20% reduction. We've exceeded that slightly. The Fire Department is still asking concerns on the, on the time of dispatch and their responses to lower priority calls, and we're still trying to monitor that and make sure that we stay on top of it. But I would say the preliminary numbers are positive.
It's decreased the amount of calls by about 35%?
30.
30, and it was projected to be 20.
Yes, sir.
What, do we have, do we have data on response times?
Yes.
And it's taking us longer?
There's a longer, no, let's be clear on this. It's longer on the dispatch time by about a minute before, as they go through that to the Fire Department, not on IMSA, but to the Fire Department. The calls about, dispatch is about a minute further, longer. And then on some of the low priority calls, as I work through the protocol, sometimes on somebody that needs a, that's falling, needs to get up, and some of those lower priority calls, there's been some delays on some of those, too. So we're monitoring that and trying to make sure that we are providing quality care to our citizens.
Because it's an area of concern. If fire is getting there 84% first, 84% of the time, fire is the one who's, has to get there before five minutes to have your cardiac outcomes and get there first.
I understand.
So one minute, a one-minute delay in dispatch would be significant.
Chief Bryant, can you address that? We're talking about the delay in dispatch for the Fire Department.
Right. I could say, of the remaining calls, I heard that part of the discussion, that we're responding on currently, there obviously is a slower response time on those calls because of the process in place now. There's two components to it. IMSA has to do an address verification when they receive the call from 911, and then they go through their, what they refer to as their pro-QA processes, where they're establishing and placing the proper priority on that call. Once that's determined, that's when they either prompt us to respond, because it's one of the ones that, one of the call categories that we've agreed that we need to respond on, or we don't, obviously, get a prompt. So that process, or those two components, right now, current indications is about a two-minute timeframe, average, so before we receive that prompt to respond. So I just wanted the Council to be very, very clear and...
Is that increase of one?
Excuse me?
Net increase of one. Before CAD to CAD, it was one minute, and now it's two minutes. Is that...
You could look at it that way, because when we, prior to CAD to CAD, we received the call from 911 at the same time IMSA did. They had to go through that process, just like they're going through now, but we went ahead and just dispatched our units.
I have two questions. Could there, would one minute potentially translate into significant health outcomes if it translates into a one-month, a one-minute delay in arrival, especially for cardiac?
Well, on a higher priority call, obviously, you know, that's when, those are very time-sensitive.
So a one-minute delay is cause for concern?
Could be on a high priority call. Yes, sir.
Just cutting through the chase, I mean, is the, do we need to consolidate dispatch? I mean, how do we, that's really the question. How do we solve this one minute, this back and forth? It seems that we just need to consolidate dispatch and be, have one entity.
I think that would be an option, as far as what we're talking about right now, to totally eliminate any type of duplication of effort or overlapping of responsibilities. Obviously, that would be an option to addressing that.
But I, I'm a little confused how a consolidation of dispatch fixes the one minute, because you're, they're sitting in the same room now, and they're not, they're not as far apart as sometimes, as me to the chief. You're talking about the electronics of the system working in a way that gets a dispatch out quicker, just having the people sitting over on the IMSA boards being employed by a different person. I don't know that, that that's going to impact what you're talking about.
I think the best way to explain it now is there were dual processes prior to CAD to CAD, and I thought that, I believe that's what the manager was referring to. Prior to that, we had our process, and that was about the minute timeframe. IMSA still had to do their pro-QA process, where they established a priority level to that call. Again, the whole difference now is we are not dispatching automatically as we were in the past. We are waiting for IMSA to establish a specific priority, and then they prompt us according to the protocols that we've agreed to, whether or not we respond. But that's, it's, it's a singular process now, and since we're part of that, that's the increase for us on our side.
But if the people doing the dispatching were all Fire Department employees, on a medical call, they're still going to go through the system to determine what is needed to go on that call.
Correct. And maybe a better way of explaining it is, I don't think there's any increase in response time for a transport ambulance. The difference is, because we're waiting for that priority to be established, that's the difference for us and the Fire Department's side in our response.
But what I hear you saying is, that, that concern is still going to be there whether you have a consolidated dispatch or not. And if you're wanting to go back to the system where fire dispatches as soon as they see it on the screen, it's not going to make any difference whether you have consolidated dispatch or you're sitting two miles apart in two dispatch units. If that's the case, if you're wanting to go back to fire going on every call they see up on the screen, if they think is justified, then that's the issue. It's not a consolidated dispatch issue. And if that's the case, then I think you, you have to, you, through policymakers, have to determine whether you want to go back to making the same number of calls you've been making all along anyway.
No, and I wouldn't recommend that or suggest that. That's been a positive step forward. I mean, that's what we were trying to accomplish, and that's going to have other impacts as well, financially and so forth. So I, I wouldn't in any way recommend that we revert back to that. I guess my point in the consolidation question was, I think there's efficiencies to be gained that we probably currently don't have, that could still be gained with something of that nature.
I don't dispute that, and I've been advocating consolidated dispatch for a long time. I just, I was trying to get to the point of that extra minute that's being discussed. You're going, you're still, whoever's dispatching, you're still going to have to wait through the system to determine whether it's just a transport unit, or if it's a first response and a transport unit. And I, I don't want to mislead people thinking that a consolidated dispatch is going to find a way to circumvent that system somehow.
Probably not on a significant level, but I think, like I say, there could be some efficiencies still to be gained in that way, but just have to get there to see.
But if we could identify those, we could...
Still, right now, there's a transfer of information going on, and I realize that we're very much co-located, but there's still a transfer of information and so forth.
But if we could identify those efficiencies, we could implement them...
Correct.
...whether we had a consolidated dispatch or not.
My point in the data that we're putting is to make sure that everybody understands that on our, as it relates specifically to Fire Department response, because of the process that's in place now, we do have some increased response times. And that's something that we're, I mean, when we first went to CAD to CAD, we were more concerned about it, but as we've gotten through the transition, and it's, it's, that's, that part's improving as well.
Okay. The data, it's early. While we only have...
Correct.
...six weeks of data, and it's the first six weeks of implementation, so...
That's an excellent point.
So maybe the jury's still out, but if we keep, if we keep going into this four months, six months, we have to get that minute back. I mean, that, it's going, it's, that's unacceptable.
I would agree with Councilman Mars. There's probably still going to be some time issues there to deal with, but again, as I've said, even since we've begun the interface, that's already improved, and it's something that we're continually looking at.
Chief, how long do you think we ought to wait before we check on this again this time? Is it six months? Three months?
Your pleasure, Mayor.
Ed, what would your preference be?
We'll monitor the situation, bring up follow-up reports.
I mean, we're continually doing it now. So the data's available, so anytime the Council requests the data, we can provide it.
We'll also be addressing it each month at IMSA's board, so we'll talk about it tomorrow, so.
Okay. Chief, thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. That concludes City Manager Reports?
Yes, sir.
All right. I don't see any citizens to be heard. Anyone wishing to speak? All right. Then we'll recess the council meeting, convene us the Finance Committee.
Two presentations this morning. The first is from the airports, from Mr. Mark Kranenberg.
Mark Kranenberg, Airport's Director, and I'm happy to present the five-year capital improvement plan for the Department of Airports. When we first break out our capital plan, we break it out by fiscal year, and you'll see the total for the five years of $259.7 million. We average about $50 million per year on capital at the airport for all three of the city's airports. When you break down the summary of projects by location, obviously, Will Rogers World Airport has the lion's share of the capital projects, some very significant ones, followed by Wiley Post Airport, $15.5 million, Clarence Page Airport, $8.2 million, and Mike Monrooney Aeronautical Center, which is becoming a major and growing line of business for the Airport's Department, is at Will Rogers, but we wanted to break that out to show you in the next five years, almost $31 million. We also break our projects out by type, and if you start at the top northeast part of your page, there, top right, we anticipate spending about 16% of our projects will be on airfield improvements for all three of the city's airports, followed by 23% for buildings and components. This would be structural and exterior improvements and roofs for trust-owned facilities. Equipment, different types of vehicles, our snow and ice equipment, firefighting trucks, infrastructure, such as pavements and water and wastewater that the airport would put in, and we have the parking facilities in for this year, because we're still doing the structural rehab on our two-story and five-story parking garages. And then, based on demand, terminal improvements anticipated at 36%. We also look at funding sources for all of our projects, and again, starting at the top right, Mike Monrooney Aeronautical Center will take about 12% of our projects. Mike Monrooney adds about $12 million a year into a escrow account for maintenance and capital improvement projects. The Federal Aviation Administration, through the Airport Improvement Program, will contribute about 19% of our capital projects. We get about $4.5 million each year from the FAA because of our passenger boarding employments, which is over $1.8 million per year. And for the general aviation airports, they compete for grants with other airports in the state. 10% of our projects will be from TSA funds. This is for our Phase Two of our closed-circuit television project, as well as the checked baggage inspection system. We also have revenue bonds, which comprises a lot of funding sources. The PFC is our passenger facility charges, which we have ongoing now, which is paying for the terminal renovation that was complete in 2006. It will also pay for the airport's share of the new checked baggage inspection system to the tune of $5.4 million. And of course, the customer facility charge in the future will pay for the consolidated rental car facility. rental car facility. And then from airport trust operations, we will add 14% of revenue to comply with our capital projects. For ongoing and new projects at Will Rogers World Airport, again, $205,231,000, just want to call a couple out to your attention. The consolidated rental car facility anticipated to be a little over $31 million. That is in design. A checked baggage inspection system, a little over $26 million. And the east side development that we're rapidly pursuing between our runway and taxiway system and Interstate 44 will be mainly for infrastructure development, roadway water and wastewater, and then phase three terminal expansion based on demand. Show you an overview of the airport and some airfield improvements. We'll start on the right side of your screen with the yellow lines are anticipated future taxiway improvements. And then you see the red line to the far right, that's taxiway H reconstruction and realignment. That project is underway now. And the green line adjacent to it is our main east parallel runway, 35 right, 17 left, where we're planning to do airfield lighting improvements this year. Moving to the left side of the screen, the thicker line is our alternate west parallel runway. We'll be doing pavement, ceiling improvements this year and then in the future, we'll be relocating taxiway B for efficiencies. Couple of years ago, we completed the terminal plan. This is not a design plan. It is a plan for planning purposes. And one of the things we considered was to improve the efficiency and the wayfinding and customer orientation in the terminal. We did look at several options for a central security checkpoint. This is the one that we settled on and we need to revalidate this program. This shows six lanes and we want to make sure that any checkpoint that we construct in the future is not just for today, but it also will meet future needs. The intent of this plan is to take the west and the east checkpoints as you see them today and turn them into meter greeter lounges and to eliminate some of the congestion that's in the lobby that you've seen over time. A couple of other benefits of this plan is to relocate airport operations from a cargo annex building, bring them over to the main building, take airport police from the basement, bring them to the ticket counter level, and also relocate the YMCA that's in the cargo building. The consolidated rental car facility you're aware of, this is the operational model we've been negotiating with the rental car companies on. This will, of course, provide adequate ready return spaces for our rental car operators on the airport to handle customer demand today and for the future. It will also provide for adequate fleet storage, some administration space, and provide maintenance and wash bays and fueling facilities for all of the rental car fleet. The checked baggage inspection system is very significant. We've never had a TSA two designs system. Our system now was put in after 9/11, after we had already led our project out with our terminal construction, so we had to redesign for checked baggage and security checkpoints. And this project, we are reviewing 70% design comments on now. The east side development, just want to point out the east side and how the realignment of Portland will be. You see that we have aviation uses that are closest to the airport infrastructures, runway and taxiways, followed by non-aviation, and then the red is planned for some retail exploration along the Interstate 44 corridor principally between Southwest 74th and Southwest 89th Street. The infrastructure is ongoing now with the realignment of Portland. The first step is utilities department installing the 48-inch water line in the 120-foot right-of-way for the new Portland alignment. That utility installation will be complete in the summer of 2013. Next spring, we anticipate bidding or the public works department will bid the roadway for both the north and south section, and the roadway is anticipated to be complete in 2014. We talk about the phase three terminal expansion project. This, of course, is based on demand. We don't need it today, but it will include a three-bay expansion, includes two new ticket counters, one baggage claim device and the new concourse to mirror the west concourse. And we, in that concourse, we want to make sure that we have an extra-large gate hold area and ramp area so that we can facilitate future international flights. And again, this will all be based on demand.
Is the A and E already done on phase three?
No, it is, it is not. We have that as a plan. We want to be ahead of the curve. We still have some vacant gates in our existing concourse due to the airline mergers that have happened. We've had some gates returned to us, but we want to be far enough ahead of this that we can go out and design this and then be ready when the demand hits for air service.
Okay.
Just want to point out the renovation of the five and two-story parking garages that's ongoing now. This will be complete next June. It's a over $4 million project. Going to general aviation, ongoing in new projects at Wiley Post Airport, a little over $15 million. The most notable will be some work on our lengthening and widening of our alternate runway 17 right and 35 left, and I have that on the next slide. And this is where you see our main runway to the right of the red line. This is our main runway, which is 150 foot wide, the same width as our runways at Will Rogers, and it's 6,800 feet long. It's very capable for the type of aircraft, business and corporate jets that are using Wiley Post today. What we wanted to do was have our alternate short parallel runway, which years ago was extended from 4,000 to 5,000 feet. It's 75 foot wide. With the aircraft that are out there today, we want to extend that to 100 feet wide and later to extend it 1,000 feet. Also at Wiley Post in the green, you see some taxiway improvements on taxiway B, which we are taking out some centerline lights and adding some taxiway edge lights. And then the main runway there, again, will be doing some significant pavement rehabilitation and joint ceiling. The northeast development project, which is phase two that we plan to do in the next five years, we completed phase one. Phase one was to get FAA's help to construct taxiway A8 that ties this whole area, which is north of the Val Air fixed base operator. The reason we developed this was we were out of developable space for people to build hangars. And so now we have created this subdivision-type development where we have access to the airfield. The airport trust built taxi lanes and roadways, fencing, also water and wastewater improvements. There's utilities and we have predetermined size lease lots for executive corporate hangars and T hangars, and we are open for business for anybody that wants to lease. What you see on the left side of that development is an overview of when it was completed. We have the right side of that, which is another 20 acres, which is greenfield that can handle future demand. Looking at Clarity Page Airport, $8.2 million in planned improvements, the lion's share of that, almost $6 million in airfield improvements, and $2.4 million we'll be doing this year with a project for pavement and lighting improvements. Ongoing projects at Mike Mononey Aeronautical Center, almost $31 million and $18 million are going to be spent in the next five years for heating and air systems for multiple buildings as well as some underground infrastructure. And then you see the major categories of work that we do at Mike Mononey on an annual basis, again, to the tune of about $12 million a year. Just wanted to show you the overall view, top view of Mike Mononey Aeronautical Center. It's 1,000 acres that is under lease with Mike Mononey, 7,500 employees, vendors and contractors. It's the second-largest Department of Transportation employee base outside of Washington, DC. Just huge for the city to have this out at the airport. That completes my presentation. Be happy to entertain any questions.
All right. Questions about the airport's capital program? Mark, thank you.
Can I ask you one question?
Yes, sir.
Is there a master plan for development of Wiley Post in terms of hangars and storage facilities for aircraft?
We did a master plan for airfield facilities, which was a requirement by the FAA two or three years ago. I think it was 2010 we completed that. We didn't do a master plan for development. When we built the northeast hangar development area, we were responding to lots of requests that we'd like to build a hangar at Wiley Post and we didn't have any more developable space on the east side of the airport along Rockwell. So what we wanted to do was create a division, a subdivision-type area where we could have predetermined lease lots so that people would come to us, fill out an application, and build their, build their facility, build a suit to their needs.
Okay. And you sell the fuel to them or how does the?
No, the fuel is either retailed through the fixed base operators. We have two, Atlantic and Val Air, and there are a few tenants that do have some self-fueling rights as a result of having a ground lease, but we don't have any other lots for self-fueling. The last one was taken about six months ago.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Next up is Rick King.
I'm just going to quickly run through our projections for the next five years in terms of what we see. Like everyone else, we laid out our five-year schedule right here. You'll see that we're really heavy in the first three years and that's primarily due to parking garage renovation and expansion activities that are going on. When you look at our projects by type, clearly our bus replacement plan and our parking garage expansion are the items that are dominating. That's about 83% of our projected capital expenses. But we do have an ongoing project to continue to upgrade all of our transit facilities, whether that includes our May Avenue Operations Maintenance Center, our Union Station facility, which is our primary administrative offices, or our downtown transit center. A couple of projects, just real quick to cover for you. We are doing a major renovation to the Santa Fe garage. We're spending a little over $2 million to do a complete facelift on the retail area. This is really the first time this garage has been addressed in, at the retail area since it was developed in the 1970s. Included in the retail area upgrades, we're also going to be looking at the elevator cabs and the elevator lobbies. Secondly, we've talked about the new parking garage that we're going to be building. This is the one that's immediately south of City Hall. We're currently in a schematic design phase. Again, this is estimated to be about 750 parking spaces. It's a nine-story garage with street-level activity on the ground floor level. Something that we're really excited about on the transit side is.
I can't get there. Rick, can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
On the new garage, will there be a ramp to access the upper floors or are people going to have to circle up?
The way the garage is designed, I mean, you do circle up, but in, once, let me say it this way, in one full circulation, you'll actually cover two floors.
Okay.
So you'll only have, if you go all the way up to the top floor on what would be level nine in the building, you will have just made four complete circles to get up that way.
Thank you.
And we felt it, and there are cut acrosses on every floor, so, and then we'll be doing things like we're doing over at, in all of our garages now. We're trying to put in signage to help you know ahead of time, so as you approach a floor, you'll know whether there's spaces available or whether you just automatically need to go up to the next floor. So there's some technology enhancements that we now have, we have those capabilities that we previously didn't. So trying to make it as easy as we can for you. On the transit side, talking about our automated vehicle location system. This is a GPS tracking system that helps us from the standpoint of managing our system by knowing where our buses are at all time, but it also provides real-time passenger information. Number one question we get asked is when's my bus going to be here? And you'll have all kinds of capabilities to be able to identify when that bus is coming by. Along with the real-time information, we also have automated passenger counting, which will help our data collection activities. And so we anticipate right now that this will probably be in place by the end of the year. We will be doing some additional enhancements to give us some additional management tools that may carry over into the next calendar year, but basically the AVL opportunities are going to be there by the, by the end of December. This shows our projects by funding source and our challenge here is really our bus replacement. I mentioned this in my budget presentation and I just want to hit it one time again. You know, we've been very fortunate in the past in doing bus replacements by taking advantage of discretionary funding. We were very successful in the world of earmarks to be able to get the money that we needed to replace our buses in a timely fashion. Unfortunately, that's not the situation anymore. It's critical for us to be able to replace them because we average about 50,000 miles a year on our buses. And so at the end of 12 years, which is the timeframe in which if you put federal money into a bus purchase, you have to maintain the bus for that length of time, we have between 600 and 700,000 miles on our buses. So as you can imagine, they're worn out by that time. So it's really important that we have a plan in place and we're able to work that plan such that we can replace our buses timely. Unfortunately, the new transportation bill that was just approved was only a two-year bill and right now, the quoted lead time, which I received this morning on getting a next round of buses is 20 months. So it's hard to do a lot of future planning. So we know we've got a real issue here in terms of our long-range funding for bus replacement and it's going to be a key item that, you know, we were fortunate in a sense that in 2007, we were part of the GEO bond issue. That was the first time we had ever been included in a GEO bond offering. That allowed us to buy replacement buses. It kind of bought us some time, but it is going to be a real challenge for us as we continue to move forward over the next three years. We're going to need to replace about 55% of our bus fleet if we're going to do it on a 12-month, a 12-year cycle. And so we've got, as this shows, we've got a big unfunded item up there and that unfunded item is nearly all buses. With that, that's.
Rick, how many of those buses will be CNG?
Well, at this point in time, we're getting near the end of our pilot program. We did do a pilot program where we were evaluating CNG versus hybrid electric buses and then clean diesel buses. Operationally, they've all done fairly well. There's a huge capital upfront cost on electric hybrid and CNG and we're trying to fairly weigh that against what our operational benefits are on each of them. Clearly, CNG is a cheaper fuel source, even when you make allowances for the fact that you don't get as many miles per gallon as you do with the other fuels types. What we have identified is it does require significantly more maintenance time. Bus parts are a little bit more expensive, not significant. It's the labor item that's really critical. The other component piece that sometimes isn't talked about is that when you get into the CNG business, you do have, if you're going to do it properly, you do have to have improved facilities. Now, we've stepped out and we've done that as we did expansion at our May Avenue facility. We did do those things that were critical to allow us to do CNG repair. And as we look to continue to do some additional expansion in our facility out there, we're continuing to do those capital upgrades that are necessary to allow us to do CNG. So very shortly, we'll be reporting to our board in terms of the status of our pilot program and make a decision as to which way we go from here.
Thank you.
Okay, Skip?
Rick, I just want to, outside of your presentation, can you give us just a little bit of insight in reference to the park and ride program that you had been investigating or as far as trying to develop a route from the foreign north?
Sure. We've got a very extensive citizen survey program going on right now with downtown employers and with others to try to identify exactly where people live so that we can give our route a fair chance to be successful. So we are focusing clearly on the premise that you're going to come from the outs, you're going to come from outside the downtown area to an employer in the downtown area. At this point in time, we're still gathering that data to try to identify by zip code where we think the majority of people are. At the same time, we've been out interviewing and making requests of places since we really don't have the financial resources to go out and buy land and create park and ride lots. We work with different churches and other retail businesses to use their parking lots during the daytime. And there's some challenges in getting them to agree to that. Some are very willing and some are very concerned about liability issues. So I would say right now that we have three locations that we think may work based on early survey results, but we really want more data back yet from citizens to say, if, you know, will you ride and if so, you know, how do we make this most convenient for you? So I would anticipate that by the end of the next month, we'll have all of that data and we'll know how we're going to put it together.
All right.
Any thoughts or projections? Have you looked at transit bus shelters at transit stops in terms of what that would cost, in terms of capital?
Yeah, I'm sorry, didn't mean to cut you off. We've done two things. We've talked to our current shelter provider and then we've also gone out and done some costing on our own just to see what it would be. I would say to put in a complete shelter, which would be the shelter, the concrete pad that it sits on, and then ADA accessibility. And when I say that, I'm talking about, the assumption is there's a sidewalk there and we're making the connection from the sidewalk to the shelter so that anyone in a wheelchair would have the capacity to take advantage of the bus shelter. That number's going to be in the $12,000 category. And from the standpoint, there's two issues. One is obviously the capital side of it is how do we pay for those shelters? The second issue from our standpoint is operational, which is why we've worked with the private sector in terms of doing the capital in the past, which has been a partnership in the sense that they put the unit in, they maintain the unit, and then there's advertising revenue that comes off of that that helps defer their costs and at the same time, they share some of that revenue with us. For us to get into the program, we would also then have to consider the maintenance of the shelters and right now, we don't have the staffing to do that. So there is that O and M. So, so there is that O and M, or else we would contract that cost, one of the two, if we owned the shelters. So in terms of how many shelters we would need across the system, in part, that becomes a discussion of, you know, do we want to do it at every stop if, if money was no issue? Obviously, that would be our preference, because we'd like to give the people covered shelters in order to try to encourage a better riding experience. Not having that fiscal ability to do that, then it becomes a question of placement. And now we get into an issue that, that the feds are very concerned about in the sense that we treat all of our riders across the city equally. And so it becomes a situation in terms of essentially spreading the wealth so that in your conversations of how many miles of sidewalks or roads or whatever you have in your wards, we would have to look very carefully at that and make sure that we treat that dispersal of, of shelters evenly, particularly being sensitive to those lower economic areas. And that is a federal requirement in environmental justice issues that we have to deal with every day.
Do we have a conversation at some point with neighborhoods about, like this western bid that I've entirely, I mean, they're under the assumption, based on conversations they had with Laura Story and others in 2006, 2005, that transit shelters were going to be part of the 2007 bond street improvements? Do we have conversations with neighborhoods that, that might be part of the improvements?
I, I can say we didn't. As, as I've got my transit hat on now, we did not have those conversations. I am aware that particularly on the northwestern development activity that was going on, part of which I believe was a bond, a bond proposal, that those retail operations up there were interested in doing some type of a bus shelter that did not look like the current shelters that were out there. They were actually talking to, to our contractor that provides those shelters, and he was coming up with a hybrid design to try to address some of their concerns or some of their desires.
So you're, you're getting ready to interview consultants that are going to look in the next few months at how to increase ridership and, and tweak our, our bus system?
Correct.
Are you going to include that kind of in their scope of work, the, the bus shelters?
And part of what you will see is that generally, as we talk about what it takes to enhance our system, bus shelters is one of the component parts. We didn't specifically spell that out in our early scope of work. We were talking about trying to just improve our system overall. But as we talk to, as we talk to that consultant, whoever is selected, those are the kinds of things that rise to the top. Obviously, the more amenities that we can provide for our transit riders, the better off we are, the better off they are. So that is certainly an item to be considered.
Okay. I, I just think it's, it's as important as anything. I think it's, the system is broke, it's not working, it's shameful. You're, you're discounting ridership on days with harsh weather, you're not protecting people with, with overhead, and it's just, I think you're sending a message to, to your riders that you don't have value. We don't value you.
I don't, I don't think he is.
I don't, no, I don't--
We are.
Right, right, right.
All right, I appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Ready to go? We have no executive session today, so we'll adjourn.